Are we ready?
Almost.
Okay.
We have to check our situation. Because if there's too many with training.
Well, we might see it right there on the agenda.
I know nothing about nothing.
Two minutes. Mr. Austin, how have you been?
Great.
Very casual. Give me two minutes more.
Over dressed.
Well, I'm comfortable.
I'm glad you're comfortable.
Okay.
It's loud.
I'll be more comfortable in about two minutes. You got, you got one minute. Actually fifty seconds, but wait. Cassie said it's alright to wait. Everybody excited about being here tonight? Scanning your evening at the table? Thank you. Did you tell me you were going to sign?
Oh, this is from a long time ago, it's not.
Oh.
Yeah.
Way too long, huh? Was it in the trunk of your car?
No, it's been in my nuts this afternoon.
I hope it's not a milkshake.
No.
How's Karen this evening?
I'm doing just fine, thank you. Checking in with the family.
Oh, good. How many children do you have? What grade is?
A sophomore, junior, senior, and then a sophomore in college.
Wow.
So it's like the high school, actually my oldest just turned twenty yesterday.
No kidding?
So now only three teenagers.
You can not look old, but you have a forty year old child.
I was like, high school all the time.
Started early. It was your high school sweetheart.
That's fun.
No, that's an interesting story that you can ask me about later.
Alright. Well, we're just waiting for Chris. I'll wait back.
Karen, did you just set up that computer? We did set one up.
Do we have someone to say the pledge would lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight? Alright. Alright, roll call.
Austin.
Here.
Ellingworth.
Here.
Kimbrel.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Ressler-Holz.
Here. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Dell is going to lead us.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our moment of silence, each elected official on the state says an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of Colorado. I would like to read the preamble of the Colorado Constitution. "We, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility and provide for the common defense, to promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. I would like to ask the supreme ruler of the universe to give us wisdom in our meetings, in governing the school, and having the best school that we possibly can for our parents and children." Now, the moment of silence, please. Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda?
So moved.
I would, hold on for a minute, and do I have the most recent copy of the agenda?
I believe so.
I thought it'd be...
How come just, just double check? You do not have the correct one. Because I put your instructions on it first, so I'll give you mine.
Okay.
Here we go. There we go. Yes, so follow on this one.
Got it.
But you read, but you read the...
Got it.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Austin.
Aye.
Ellingworth.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Ressler-Holz.
Aye. Thank you very much. So this evening, we're gonna have several discussions. We have an informational discussion with potential action and the board does reserve the right to take action on the identified items. First, for discussion, we have A, review the recommended policy updates created by the Board Point Committee on District Accountability, the DAC policies. And we will start, each of us should have in our packet a copy of GP seven, AE, and AER.
No, AE is the one that I did not get from this.
Okay.
Did you make any changes?
That's the one that's primarily statute governing the AER.
We didn't even make an edit, so I felt like, and we looked over it and I emailed David Ressler-Holz and I said, hey, do we need a copy? He wrote it, it's all in the packet, we did it, but we just, it's a reference to statute.
Right, AE, as you can see in, it is included in here. I only see AER in here, I'm missing something.
No, that's what she was talking about. That's what I'm saying is that you guys didn't provide me with any recommended changes, so there's nothing in the packet.
Alright.
So I'm assuming if you guys didn't make any changes, it stays as is.
I had it here from when Cassie and I were working on this and it is really just repeating statute, although we should've corrected an error.
Yes.
There was an error, if you go down, does anyone have a copy of it?
I have it.
I do not.
Last week.
Under legal references, you'll see the top one, one, two, the third one down under Colorado revised statute twenty-two dash eleven dash three oh one and three oh two. That should be the School Accountability Committee, I believe.
Yes.
And the one under it, twenty-two, eleven, four oh one, and four oh two should also be School Accountability Committee rather than DAC.
Okay, and that does not require, that's just that, general housekeeping. So I will change that, doesn't work.
David, the first set is District Accountability Committee. The second set should be changed from District Accountability Committee to School Accountability Committee.
So yes, so the laws from the statute from twenty-two dash eleven dash the three oh one through like three oh seven.
Three oh, yeah.
I know it says three oh two here, but in three oh seven, Colorado revised statutes is the District Accountability. And then the four hundreds are the, yeah.
I had that, okay, I had that reversed, okay. Good.
Was there any other?
That was the only thing, only discussion item that needed to be changed or edited for AE. So I know we're a little bit out of order, so if we can indulge just for a moment on that, we can get AE out of the way.
Kelly, do we need to do anything or send that to you or?
Nope, I made it up. Then I'll just keep that changing.
Okay, so that answers the question about AE and it also lets us go back until we finish that. So let's go back to GP seven. Cassie, would you like to tell the rest of the board what we did? And just give an update on what we did and how, what we went over.
Well, we basically have been out from a previous week in the meeting that was already discussed because there was a pretty much discussion here about some of this stuff. And then Board Committee Principals, we didn't touch anything about that because that just overused the Board and overall committees. But we did look down the District Accountability Committee, the DAC. And this one's your last page. Okay, yeah, sorry. And so we added the charter application prior to it, or no, that was part of the rules. But as far as the laws, we just followed the laws, the statutes that are in it. We did make some adjustments to the numbers. I think we talked about just trying to have like a smaller DAC committee was what was proposed last time as well as just, that way there's not so many questions. I do think there's something we want to discuss tonight to amend from ours, but other than that, for GP seven, by statute you have to add a charter school represented by one parent. So we added that as well as demonstrated. Do you want to go through, just read them all or what?
Well, I think you covered most of them.
I think do us for like a summary.
Right, what we discussed, the changes to be made, and then we'll read through those.
Okay.
Where the conversation was that the principals would make suggestions to the Board members for Board approval on, and provide an entire list of all applicants. They would provide the recommendations of who they would like to see on their School Advisory Committee. The other thing there was that there was discussion and suggestion that the School Advisory Committee and the District Advisory Committee should be the same as a one-year term and that we need to ensure that there, according to statute, that there would be a charter school representative and a parent or a person appointed by the charter school that was knowledgeable in charter schools. And we are in agreement. So that's what we had discussed at the last meeting. Cassie and I met and did the edits. Now, I had been expecting to see a red, oh, we do have, I just can't see the red.
Yeah, it didn't print very well, me yellowing.
Alright. Has everyone had a chance to read through the edits that we did make?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
But is there any discussion about the changes that we did make? Or would we like to go to the, to the edits and read through the edits themselves? First, have discussion.
I think reading through would be helpful. I'm having a hard time. I did read this online and I was able to distinguish the bold print from the standard print so that I could see what he would have added, but this is a little bit more challenging to read.
Okay.
And so I'm assuming that if there's a strikeout, then that's being removed. Like, for example, number six on B six, that's being removed.
That's been moved up, Chris, to that B body paragraph where it's down bold. Because it, it just didn't make sense where it was.
Okay, go. So that would be helpful if we could just kind of navigate through briefly because I don't think there's much to this other than the numbers of people that are gonna be on the DAC, the adding, the charter, the responsibilities of adding a review of the charter application.
It's by in statute of it, so I just reiterated it literally from statute.
Yeah, six of them.
And I thought I was gonna just note because if parents are having problems with curriculum or stuff, that's something that like the SACs can be like, hey, if parents get together and we understand this, how can we help? And that's something they do already, but it said it in the statute to increase level in parent engagement. And I was like, you know, we just need to reiterate that. So David and I thought that was a good reiteration of what's already in the statute. It wasn't adding anything that wasn't already there by law.
So both of those additions to
I can pull it up.
The general purpose has to do with, with the statute.
Mm-hmm, I can pull it up for you too. I didn't have it up prior.
So since this is our first edit of a policy, I'd like to hear either from Chris or Kelly or Tina and Dell. Do we typically, shall we read through the entire policy? Or just through the sections that have edits given?
I think reading the entire policy is what it's called for. I think it's not a long policy. I don't think it would take, we could spend more time talking about what we're gonna read. I need to keep on this reading.
And we were all including, let's talk about it for a long time.
Let's go ahead and read it.
Alright.
I'll start.
Okay.
Policy type governance process, Board Committee, Principals, GP seven. Board Committees are liaison arms. When used, will support the work of the Board and reinforce proponents of the Board's job and never interfere with delegation of authority from the Board to the Superintendent. Accordingly, all, all Board Committees are advisory in nature to the Board, whether or not Board members sit on the Committee. Board Committees are to assist the Board to do its job, not to direct or advise the staff. Committees ordinarily will assist the Board by preparing policy alteration, alternatives, and qualifications for Board liberation. In keeping with the Board's broader focus, Board Committees will not have direct dealings with the current staff operations unless specifically given authority by the Board. We'll just go around, so if you want to pick.
Yeah, yeah, are you on three now?
Two.
Okay, so Board Committees may speak or act for the Board only when formally given such authority for specific and time limited purposes. Expectations of authority will be carefully stated by the Board to assure that that Committee authority will not conflict with authority delegated to the Superintendent. Number three, Board Committees cannot exercise authority over the Superintendent or staff because the Superintendent works for the whole Board. Any direction to the Superintendent related to the Committee, the recommendation must come from the whole Board. Board Committees are expected to avoid over-identifications with organizational parts rather than the whole. Therefore, a Board Committee which has helped the Board create policy will not be used to monitor organizational performances on the same level, on that same subject. Number five, this policy applies only, this policy applies only to Committees which are formed by the Board's actions, whether or not the Committees include Board members. Number six, all Board Committee meetings are subject to open meeting call.
Seven, District Accountability Committee, DAC, is required by statute. A, purpose, one, to measure the adequacy and efficiency of the educational program using the district and state reporting template. District stakeholders input through surveys, letters, or other means of feedback as well as the district purpose statement and annual goals. Two, to make recommendations to the Board relative to the program of accountability. The DAC and the Board shall cooperatively determine areas of study at least annually. Three, to make recommendations to the Board relative to the prioritization of expenditures of school district monies as related to Board and School Accountability Committee SAC goals. Four, to provide consultation on adoption, revision, and implementation of a district safe school plan.
Five, issues not within the scope of the District Accountability Committee include, A, personnel, B, transportation, C, maintenance, D, athletics and activities, E, facilities, F, single building issues, G, boot service, and H, technology services. Number six, to review the charter application prior to consideration by a local school board. Number seven, to increase the level of parent engagement in the school district. Seven B, membership appointed by the Board. The Committee will be an accurate representation of our stakeholders. Members will advise the Board of Education in their responsibilities of district accountability. Members will be selected by the Board of Education through district and community requests expressing interest in serving on a DAC. Said DAC membership as follows. Number one, at least one parent of students enrolled from each school representing each school's SAC. Three parents total required by law. Number two, one teacher from each level of the school in the district. One elementary school teacher, one middle school teacher, and one high school teacher.
Can I interrupt you? As we're going through, no, you didn't mess anything up. We have, this is a part where there is an edit in here. Shall we highlight when we get to the edited parts, Chris, or?
That would be helpful because I'm struggling.
Okay.
So the, the original was...
Six and seven on...
Six and seven.
Six and seven on five, or.
I understand. Okay, so the darker.
Yeah, so the...
So for example, B one, the addition would be of students enrolled, is that right?
Of students enrolled. At least one parent of students enrolled from each, and that was the change. Nothing was struck. That was added.
And then on the top of that, and the members will be selected by the Board of Education through district and community requests, expressing interest in serving the DAC, which was originally number six, but it was moved up to the paragraph before the numbers.
Did you?
Okay, thank you.
I think we're on two now.
We're going through, yeah.
Yeah, we're on two.
She just read two and then, does she finish over two though?
Right, well, we'll go back to one because that's at least one parent, okay. What was edited, students enrolled from each, right? Students enrolled.
It was just following what was already in the DAC law.
Yes. It was in the statute. And we just made it clear that it wasn't just a parent, but it was a parent of students enrolled in that school.
Okay, do you want me to read two again and highlight it?
Please. Okay. Will I help, Chris?
Okay, one teacher and then what was edited, each level of the school in the district. One elementary teacher, one middle school teacher, and one high school teacher. And one teacher total required by law.
Okay, so if we could pause there just for my clarification. So now, in, in replace of, from each school, now it's from each level, so now there's three teachers as opposed to five.
Five, yeah.
Correct.
And what's required by law is one.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so number, the old number four was struck out.
Now, that is one, can I stop you there?
We're gonna discuss.
That is, what?
Number, okay, go ahead.
I'm talking about number four that we're on right now, that we struck. When Cassie and I talked about that, we went back and forth on it quite a bit. And let me just require everyone who's listening. Number four is one high school student, as available, not required by law. We went back and forth on it and I would like to, tonight, go back and forth on it if you can and just discuss it because if we're talking about an upperclassman in school, I really do want their opinion. I mean, if they're, they're old enough to vote, they're old enough to enter the armed forces, they're old enough to start a family. And so I would like to have their perspective on the District Accountability Committee. I'm glad that there is a student on the student, or the School Advisory Committees, but I would like to have that perspective from them and it, for me, it does two things. One is, it's investing in our kids in a small way. It says, it says, it helps them to participate in this process, in a political process. And I say that term loosely, political. And they're investing in something that's bigger than them. It's not, it's something that is about a whole district and they're investing into something that they've put their life into and gone through. So personally, I would like to hear that opinion on that, on the DAC as well as the school. So that's my two cents about that.
Yeah, we would like to hear other people's opinions on it because we did go back and forth on it. We, you know, like, you said old enough to vote, and I was like, what if they're not? And then, I don't know, we just wanted to hear other people's.
Yeah, they're making big, I'm gonna stand on my side for a minute.
It's political, it's organizational. You know, you're talking about budget, you're talking about personnel, you're talking about transportation. And I'd say it would be more of an organizational group, what they have from the SAC.
What? Now I forgot what I was gonna say.
Sorry.
How do we finish reading it and then come back to the edits and say which ones do we want to discuss?
Yeah.
Like, let's complete the first reading.
Well, we're all, okay, we already started discussing.
No, you and I were just talking about it, so we'll go put a note on it.
Okay.
We're on eight, no, and I think we're actually on three. Which has no edits.
Has no edits.
No, I think.
It's, we're on three, Sue.
Okay, one elementary, this one?
Yes.
Okay, one elementary and one secondary administrator. One administrator total required by law. Number four was struck, we just talked about that, talk about it again. Five, one business person in the community, one required by law. Number six, one, one resident in the community who are not parents, employees, or related to parents or employees of the district. Number seven, the original number seven was struck. Number eight, two Board members, the Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent, not term limited. The number, this number seven was edited, this is edited. Each charter school shall be represented by, by one parent when a student enrolled in the charter school. Said parent shall be referred by the charter schools, one parent total required by law. Number eight, this was edited. One person in the community that has sufficient knowledge of the charter schools referred by the charter schools, one person total required by law. The term for membership is one year. The Board of Edu, this is, this is edited. When reading down, the Board of Education may renew membership with a maximum of four consecutive terms that can be, shall be appointed by the Board of Education.
So yeah, picking up with number eight, which there is no change. It's District Personnel Performance Evaluation Council required by statute. Subparagraph A, purpose, subsection one, consult with the Board as to fairness, effectiveness, credibility, and professional quality of the licensed personnel performance evaluation system and its processes and procedures, in accordance with state law. Subsection two, to conduct a continuous evaluation of the personnel performance evaluation system and its processes and procedures. Subparagraph B, membership appointed by the Board. Subsection one, as a minimum, one teacher, one administrator, one principal, one parent, and one person who does not have a child in school. And subsection two, the council may be composed of any other school district committee having membership as defined above. Subparagraph C, authority, advisory to the Board. And then the, the rest is just the dates of adoption and revision dates.
And we've got it.
Okay. Let's go to the first edit and see if there's any kind of discussion as we go through it. How we, we might have.
So that, yeah, on page two, three of GP seven involve subsection six and seven, which are quoted from the statute. The only thing I would say here is it just makes more sense to renumber these so that six becomes five, seven becomes six, and five becomes the new seven because that way they're all setting out the powers of the DAC and then the final one is the things that are not within the scope of the DAC and that's just gonna be a more logical read.
Yeah, I agree with that. So six would become five.
Right.
Seven would become six and five would become seven.
And that's consistent with the original writing of it where that issue not within the scope of the final portion of that section. So.
Yeah, that's a good word.
Push one count, see if you have analysis.
Any other comments on six or seven?
So we're just talking about, yeah, renumbering.
And then membership, bringing what was six up into the primary introduction paragraph, that's fine, that's just the, that's just bringing a little clearer.
Yeah, it was kind of an oddball when the subsections are stating, you know, who's gonna fill the membership and what the role is and everything and then just this random thing saying that how the members will be selected. It made sense to put it in the, the main paragraph there.
Which, yep. I'm curious about B number one.
Okay, yeah, just of the students enrolled?
No, actually, by, I'm just curious, because my understanding... No, actually, by, I'm just curious, because my understanding is that there were some, there's going to be some more significant changes to the AER that are tied to this particular subsection one, represent, the phrase representing each school's, school accountability committee. So the parents from the school accountability committee are, it's like that's the bridge, that brings them into the DAC, right?
Right. But that's the way that's always, I guess, the way that's been for some time.
That is how you would change.
Right, I know.
Okay, okay.
And so, bear with me as I like point to that, only because I anticipate going into a deeper conversation about the Board of Education approving members of the school accountability committee. And if this was the bridge that was creating issues for this board to say, how is it that members of the DAC are automatically brought in from SAC? If the, if the Board of Education has no vetting process in who's going to be in the SAC, then it's like an automatic process of bringing those individuals into the DAC. And so, I understand that the, I actually do, I actually understand maybe even some frustration that this board has had with the size of the DAC. Maybe the way that the appointed individuals in the SAC have automatic, as parents have automatically come into the DAC. So there's, I'm anticipating a deeper conversation. I'm just curious why that phrase, representing each school SAC, I mean, that, that could change.
It could, you know, and when we talked about this at the last meeting, we were, you know, pointing out that when you look at the law, it just says, one parent of students enrolled from each school. It doesn't require that they co-serve.
Right.
On the SAC. And the SAC has like three parents on each one, so one parent from the SAC would come up to the DAC. But, you know, it does make sense, good reform, that it's a bridge, a connection between the school accountability committees and the district accountability committee. So I think that makes sense. Likewise, you know, the way that the principals had recommended was that they recommended the teacher representative from each school accountability committee to the district accountability committee, although we don't have that required. I, that likewise would often make sense to keep that sort of closeness. So I, some sort of balance on that, because you don't want it to be, that the DAC suddenly becomes a rubber stamp for the various SACs. But on the other hand, you do want there to be some continuum of, you know, work, experience, knowledge, recommendations, and things like that.
Understood.
I'm just.
Uh, can I add real quick before? Just a, it's a clarifier from last meeting, you know, and just learning for those of you who are getting your emails, if we're, and we're involved so much in the district, I think there needs to be a discussion on like, if certain, what if there's certain parents that want to join a SAC that don't know about it, because they've already been checked. And I, I don't know if that's something we need to be opening up, so like, everyone just at least has an opportunity. And that's sort of what caused the conversation, so bringing that together. Because there's clearly, different schools do different stuff, and that's fine. But if some parents and teachers, like after this week, I heard wanted to be on it, but just don't know the process for each school, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and not to, and I want to hear exactly what you're saying, and I don't want to get too far off of this, where we're at. I just, it would just be a question that I had related to, if there is a perceived challenge that this board is trying to resolve or trying to help. And it involves approval of SAC members as opposed to the former modality of delegating that authority to each principal to create their own SAC. To me, I'm like, okay, that could be one solution to ensuring that the members of DAC, that the board has input in who's going to be on the DAC. Okay, I get that. The other, the other possible solution is to, I mean, consider like, we were talking about now, consider removing the bridge, like that phrase, representing each school SAC as opposed to parents at large who may or may not be in the SAC. Now, I understand, like, there's a wisdom in having people who have continuity of understanding and bringing it from the school accountability committees into the district accountability committees. But I'm not, I'm not sure that they have to be part of the school accountability committee in order to be on the DAC. The way it reads now is it does imply that. And that that would open it up to more people within the community who are not members of the SAC. It could also be a way to continue to allow the principals the authority to delegate their SAC or to, you know, to appoint their SAC without the board feeling the necessary due diligence to ensure the vetting process so that the DAC is not automatically going to be those parents who are part of the SAC. So I, to me, I don't, or there's a third option, and that is to, regardless if they're on the SAC or not, they're still going to be subject to being selected by the board. Whether they're on the SAC or not.
I mean, I'm not married to the language about them.
Yeah.
Representing each school SAC. If you strike that, it still leaves the board the flexibility to nonetheless appoint people from the school accountability committee, just like the teachers and things.
Yeah, I like that too. I like opening that option up, that if a parent doesn't want to serve on both of them, and they, it would give us flexibility. I do like that option.
Yeah, and I think it would also maybe, um.
The.
No, it's okay. I was just going to say, again, just reiterating, like, it feels like there's some energy around trying to safeguard the DAC from being loaded with people who have not been selected by this board. And the bridge in was through SAC, which previously, those members had been appointed by the principals.
Great.
It was a delegated authority that this board over the years has given to principals. I actually, as you're going to hear later, I'm going to orient towards not, they're not changing that actually, but letting this principals have the authority to select their SAC. I just feel like this is going to help this board feel more confident that they have the vetting process, who's on the DAC, regardless of whether they're on the SAC or not.
All I was going to say, by law and statute, this is at least three parents of students enrolled in the district public schools. What's that?
Yeah.
I mean, doesn't have to have that, I'm not married to that.
Because right now, right now, there's five parents that would be represented, representative of each school, which I'm fine with, bring more parents into it, it's great.
What, could you read the law, what the statute says?
It just says, one, each school board shall employ or create a process for the election of a school district accountability committee that shall consist of, A, at least three parents of students enrolled in the district public schools.
That would be the one that applies to this.
Yes.
I would be willing to have a conversation about having that, so it could be either or. Sure.
That's fine, buddy. So we're just striking the rest of representing each school, right?
Sure. Do you want to just adopt the language of the statute?
I just, let's just strike representing each school's SAC, fine. What's the statute number you were just reading from, Cassie?
Um, section twenty-two dash eleven dash thirty-one. That's the first, one A.
I'd go for just copying the statute.
I would just strike out.
I mean, just have one sentence in the statute that's apparent.
It says at least three parents of students enrolled in the district public schools, which that would reduce two parents. And we spoke about, you and I went back and forth on that. And we decided, we went back and forth on that, and we, there's also a law in there and a statute, which I would need to pull up with you, because.
So, it's from the same statute?
Yeah.
Two B, so it requires that the, the parent representatives always outnumber, not equal, but outnumber the next highest group. That actually requires us to change the teacher representation, because otherwise, there would be five parents and five teachers, and we'd be violating statute. So that's in paragraph two.
Which it was prior, I think.
I think from each school is great.
Yeah.
Representative parents from each school is great.
Yeah.
But they're on the SAC. And then I think, you know, you've changed here, like, when you go down to two, one parent from each level, that's the.
One teacher.
Right, one teacher from each level of the school.
But that goes back to the law, having maybe five, and they weren't, the next subset has to be larger, and they were, I think they were equal.
Right, and that violates the law.
That violates the law.
The parents have to outnumber.
Yeah, so that's sort of why. You do have a merit pair. Well, I didn't put parent, I was by the statute, and I went straight from the statute. So this is not coming up from my.
That's number seven, right?
Yeah, it does say on that.
Oh, it does say seven. Yeah.
So that would be four, no, that would be six parents.
Six parents.
I didn't know if that's, yeah.
What were you saying, Del?
I was, I think the statute separates that by identifying representation from the district's public school, right?
Well.
We thought that, I was having that discussion too, exactly, on like, how do you separate it? Because these are two separate.
But no, Del is right. At least three parents of students enrolled in the district public schools. And then it has the charter schools. So I don't know if the law intends for us to add the public school and charter school parents in a one group of parents or not.
That doesn't matter, because you took number two down to three, so you're still okay.
Yeah.
As long as we have one from any and all charter schools, and there are more parents than any other group.
So that begs a question. I guess, I guess there is a delineation between the public school and charter school law, but I'm curious about the one teacher from each level of the school. Because I'm not seeing any requirement for a teacher representative from the charter schools.
It's not, yeah, the law does not require that.
Not for the teacher.
We didn't, we just put in what the law requires, so we're not requiring a teacher or merit. In fact, it's just this one person knowledgeable about charter schools. In theory, it could be somebody who does not work or attend a charter school.
Yeah, it was really confusing, so yeah, that was not, I was thinking teacher for charter, not parent. You have the parent in the community, but it did not say teacher in the statute.
What, what we had talked about was that we would ask any charter school to select or recommend to the board their representative, so that they could have somebody who represented, they were sure that they would have the representation that they wanted on the accountability committee. So that the person who is knowledgeable about charter schools would be recommended by them, not just any person in the district that was knowledgeable.
Not to them just referred.
Refer, yes.
That's what I think the language we use.
Meaning that.
It could be a teacher.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone that.
Board, a board director, person, dean, principal, whatever.
So to reiterate back, at least one parent from each school, period. Oh, at least one parent of students enrolled from each school, period.
Yes.
And then one teacher from each level of the school in the district. One elementary school teacher, one middle school teacher, one high school teacher. That's a shift. And, and I'm just curious if I could just ask maybe Tina, Del, what, what do you think about that? I mean, shifting it from five teacher representatives.
To what, what was the last thing you said?
To three.
To three, instead of five teachers to three, okay.
Do you have a thought on that? Is there any like, concerns that you're?
I bet, just for us to speak on, my take on it is, it's similar to the, it's in line with the administration piece as well. So there's one administrator from each level versus one from each school. So I think it aligns on that piece.
And I would obviously align it closer. I would make it one elementary teacher, one secondary teacher, like one elementary administrator and one secondary administrator.
Right, so I think, yeah, so the alignment, I think, is good on that piece, and as Greg already said, it could go tighter. But I would think in my mind that at least the three, because of the variables that show up at each level, right? Even though secondary, you define six through twelve, the variables that happen with the middle school are a lot different than those that happen at the high school. So I think a voice of something that's representative of that group would be.
Do you?
At the administrative level?
At the, at the teacher level.
Teacher level, teacher.
Yes.
But you understand why, we were looking at the law, and David's like, we can't have this, and we were just like, oh, okay, so that's sort of how.
Because that parent count has to be higher than the next.
Yeah.
That's sad.
It's not equal or greater than, it's greater than.
So the option in my eyes, I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of term, but the option in my eyes is you either reduce one or you raise the other. So if you say you want teachers at each level, then you create a pathway for there to be another parent.
Another, okay.
And in general, the DAC needs a little reduction, because as it stands, it's like a twenty-member committee, and no.
I'm glad to see you guys shake your head on that, because we're looking at it, the numbers.
Somebody can get anything done with twenty members, look at Congress, so.
Well, it's amazing that they have. So that's a testament to their ability to get stuff done. So that being said, the reduction of numbers, I'm fine with, it's just, I was just curious about your ideas related to future involvement.
I think there are avenues for teacher involvement. I mean, when we look at budgets, and when we look at UIP, and when we look at, I feel like we have avenues in the district where teacher voices is elevated up into those, into those groups. So knowing that their, their DAC people would come from, you know, the teachers, plus you have administrators, and you have the superintendent. So, you know, I mean, you have a district presence in the DAC, but I feel like our teachers have avenues for budget input and things like that.
And in all fairness, like, when, you know, Lynn brought this a couple of years ago, there was a modification to this policy a couple of years ago. And that was in hopes of bringing.
Last year, twenty-one.
Bringing some, some equal numbers of parent representation to administrative and school district representation. And so, I feel like we're still trending that way, and that's fine. I think, and I think one of the things that might help the community have some involvement, whether they're involved in SAC or not, is fully just struck out of their representative in each school's SAC. I mean, I think that creates opportunity for other parents to be involved, put in the district.
And I think that's a great question, because we were discussing that, and it's like, okay, if, and David kept bringing up the law, he was like, you have to have more parents. So we have to change this one, so we were back and forth, and so we counted it, and we're like, okay. So I know it sort of worded weird, I know you probably could have done like one elementary and one secondary, but Del brought up the same point we talked about, was having, you know, middle school issues are different than high school issues at times. And so we're just having three, but there is administration, you know, you have the one elementary, the one secondary administration, you have the three teachers. And I had to reread the law just to make sure, because I was like, wait, what if we have four parents of administration? And it's like, no, our teachers. But no, there's still, you know, with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the two board member, that, if you don't want to count the board members, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, that's two, and we have secondary elementary administrator, that's four, and then three. So we're still having a voice, and there are equal representation of parents. Just for clarification, we no longer have an assistant superintendent, so that one could be served any kind of.
I thought you said that, but then what, you said no.
I think you could say superintendent board designate. Because I believe that was challenged in the past.
That's good.
Yeah. Because in the way it reads right now, it looks like.
I think that is.
It's four with board members, so we could probably say two board members and the superintendent presays board designate.
Isn't that in our?
That's in a lot of policies.
Yeah, it's in a lot of policies, so.
I thought that was also in the law.
So where is that?
Sorry, that's on the next page.
Communication.
Off on the next page.
Okay, so I think, I think if we were to stay on, on the pace where we're headed, we'll get to that, I think that's really good. I wonder about. Yeah, back to two. I, I haven't heard any other opinions about that, that's why I'm asking.
I would still tie it further. I'd have, I'd have it mirror the administration piece in the next subparagraph. In part because we have to remember that because of merit, we're having to add two members to the DAC. So it, size is an issue and so it does favor making sure that we are rebalancing things. And, and like, like Del and Tina said, you know, you're going to have that strong district presence. And those teachers and also, you know, the teachers are represented on the school accountability committees. So I tend to think they should mirror, and we can say one more person on the DAC, so that's maybe only fifteen members instead of twenty members. And, you know, if, I understand like there's differences in kids between ages twelve to, you know, ages seventeen. But of course, there's no guarantee that's the way it's going to shake out on the DAC, right? We could get a, we could get a middle school teacher who's an eighth grade teacher and a, and a high school teacher who's a ninth grade teacher, so it's. That, that, that's already there, that's already baked into the cake. And if that's not a concern for the administration level, I'm not sure why that would be a concern for the teacher level. So I think it should be two and two.
Well, if you compromise and we talk about the high school, then we would, and add that, then we would be back at.
I think what Chris asked is sometimes the optics of going, you know, you reduce the committee, which I think is good because it is a very large committee. But reducing some by one, but then telling the teachers they're bound to the bottom to, that's a bigger optic of a cut.
And I actually like hearing from the different. Grade levels and I think that a year or so ago when we made these changes, I find call for it and Kelly can help me. We actually reduced the administrators by one. And so there had been a whittling of the administrators at that point. And now there's a whittling of the number of teachers that are in direction from five to three, which to me feels like a healthy. Move in that direction. I would, I would recommend that we keep it at each level. I don't know if the number of people in the DAC is as important to me as the representation within the DAC. And I think having a broader representation from educators in the DAC would, I like that. So specifically, what, what do you want to do with that? I don't want to do anything with that, I want to keep it the way it is. I just was asking what their thoughts were with the way it's being taken from five to three. You want to leave it the way the edit is or?
The way the edit is.
And you, you know, you talk about like the number of four and I just didn't know how to say, well, oh, lead to elementary.
Right.
So with, I, yeah, I just want to explain that, I don't want the perception of that on there, it really was a legal thing.
All right, so moving on, the next edit is number four where we're stricken one high school student. Which is not required by law to have a high school student on the DAC.
And you heard my sermonette on it?
I, you know, this high school has, is unique in that their SAC has a student on it, I guess the middle school SAC does too sometimes. I, I think that their participation on the SACs, they're going to be able to participate in the governance of their school, in fact, a little bit closer to home, quite frankly. And considering the purpose of the DAC is really to be a parent dominated committee. I think, and also with the interest of cutting down on the overall size of it, I think that that's a reasonable way to reduce the overall size without losing the voice of the high school. Because they will be represented on the SAC as well as the teacher representative and the parent representative, things like that, so I'm in favor of that cut.
So you're saying the adult representation on the DAC will, will bring forth what that student gives to SAC?
Right, they'll be on the SAC, but, and, and SAC will likewise have, in all likelihood, representation on the DAC by virtue of the, the teachers and the parents from the high school. So I think in the interest of, since we're adding two more, this is one of the places where it makes sense to make a reduction.
Well, we're going to go around the table, just saying again a bit of what I said before. I, having been on the DAC for a very short time, just a couple of years. I did appreciate the variety of perspective that came to the, there were great questions asked. There were a lot of good input from different, whether you agreed or not, it was, it was very, it was a good learning experience for me, from the different perspectives people had. Having had a number of teenage kids, as they got into the eleventh and twelfth grade, I always wanted to hear their perspective on, and we involved our kids in family decisions. And just to hear what they, what their perspective was, saying, so. I would value that perspective and having that input from the kids. And I would make it an upperclassman, probably a senior, maybe a junior, but I would like to see that. It's an investment, it says something to our kids, it says that they have somewhat of a voice and I would like to hear that.
You're saying you, you recommend that at the district level, not just at the school level?
Would you write junior or senior in there?
Yeah, I would, I, I. Although there are some brilliant ninth graders, there's some more mature than seniors.
We have the same conversation.
I think that I would revert it for an upperclassman.
Like, you know, because I was very neutral on it coming in and I've been moving back and forth and then, so. If you do add one, then I would, I'd count Dylan and Tina within the stack of the numbers, so just, you know.
Well, this would be a category student, so it wouldn't go against increasing or cause an increase in parents.
Well, no, 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 not that, but then it would actually make it, if my calculations are correct, I have my, if we have eighteen, that would be, that would make it an odd number.
It would be eighteen.
When we add the student.
With the student.
With the student, oh, right.
Interestingly, it's a high school student, I sat on the state, I counted all of them.
Did you really?
For two years.
For two years? That doesn't surprise me, so. So what that brings up to then, case in point, is it's not just for us.
It's a leadership opportunity.
It's an opportunity and, and if I'm thinking in terms of what our purpose is, is to provide opportunities. I, historically, I can't say that I've actually experienced a lot of student presence within the DAC. I think there has been at times, but for me personally, I haven't experienced it. So is there a way to put that? Opportunity in here without it being one of the requirements of member, like, we're, we're creating a policy where we are requiring ourselves to fill these seats, to fill these seats. And there may be a high, a high school student. This year that would do an amazing job and would actually benefit greatly from being a part of a process at the district level, which I'm all in favor of. For it to be in the policy as it's written, and it's also not required by law, I wonder if. There's a way for us to word it so that we provide an opportunity for an upperclassman, high school student. But, but it's not something where we are going to obligate ourselves to fulfill it out. It's, it's provided, it's an opportunity for a student to have the experience like Tina had, like the state one for two years. I think that would be great.
It did say as available before.
And what are.
It says as available.
As available, what were you going to say, David?
I would change as available, which kind of suggests that like if, if somebody stands up, then we're kind of bound because they're available. I would say, I would strike as available and change it to in the board's discretion.
And since it's appointed to the DAC, the board would have the discretion of who that would be, since we are.
We're the discretion to say this year we're not doing a high school student.
So just, I'm a high school student, because like I'm open to having a high school student.
I mean, other than the patch department law.
There's, it's a great thing to put on their college application, I know that was something we also discussed in our discussions and. And I can't even remember why it was originally instructed to report, but I know we went back and forth on it and just talking about paternity or if it's required, what's required, and so, I mean, I'm open to it. And you said, why a high school student? Board's discretion.
And then that would be recommended by?
Well, I mean, the superintendent, I don't know.
Well, it'd probably be high school.
I mean, they could apply.
Well, I think if we're talking about a student, I would rather have a recommendation, I would like to have a student, but I would like to have somebody who was recommended by their superintendent. They can apply, we would see all applications. But someone who knows these kids and say, yes, this would be a great student to have on there, they would get something that would, you know, they would.
Sure, there's nothing, nothing stopping the board from hearing recommendations.
Right.
Did you, did you say junior or senior, is that in this policy or?
I don't know if we've labeled it yet, because like we've gone back and forth, like what if you have a brilliant ninth grader, but then. You know, we've talked about like, oh, does it, you know, what are, so we don't know.
There are no votes. And I think if there's a term limit of forty years, you could get a freshman and that could go through the entire three years of high school experience and really. I mean, I'm just going out the hypotheticals.
Be Tina's record.
Yeah, he said if they, if the student was able to vote is what.
Oh, I was, I was just misunderstanding.
So just so you know, I want to clarify what I was talking, so he was just talking like what, that, like we also talked about, there could be this freshman that's so bright and like. Why would, do we need to, I wouldn't even.
If you guys want to keep high school student, I would keep one high school student, I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate the grade.
Great.
Now as far as. Since of. Like it says as available, what, how can we change that number so that it?
You said one high school student and you.
In the board's discretion.
How about as recommended by the superintendent? Will the superintendent.
No.
And at the board's discretion, it's all at the board's discretion, isn't it?
Yeah, that's redundant. If you say as recommended by the superintendent, then that says we have to take somebody, if we're following our policy, we have to take somebody recommended by the superintendent.
How, how would we word it then?
I just think, you'd say in the board's discretion?
Okay.
Or if you leave not required by law, like any of these positions that you don't find enough people for, you don't fill, right? If it's not required by law.
Right.
Because like, like last year we didn't find two business people, so we just needed one.
So just take out as available and just, and not required as law, which, or by law, which is already there.
But no, what David said is at the board's discretion, comma, not required by law, is that?
Well, they said it's productive.
I'm understanding one of these, so it's all, it's all rolling right back up to.
Yeah, I'm fine with it just not required by law.
Yeah, because I think it's redundant anyways.
Okay.
If you don't like any applicants, just.
Okay, we're on to the next one.
It's a good edit.
So we went from.
This new one number, the new number, the new, the one business thing, I think it's a good edit.
I didn't move all the numbers, I wanted to be sure, I'll strike things, I just.
So one business person.
Yeah.
Great.
So real quick for clarification, we're keeping number four, but did I hear that we want to move that to the end? Go through all the ones that are required by law? Did I hear that earlier on?
No, I don't think we need to do that because several of these are.
Okay, so we, so number four is going to, even though it's stricken in, yes, we're keeping it as number four, okay. And then I think the only thing we're striking is the as available.
Yep.
It's just going to say not required by law. Because before you guys are ready, after you guys go through all this, then I'll read what the next.
So if we go on to five, the only thing that we did is change it to the law required. So I'm curious about that one, I just have a question. What is, like that's not required by law, right?
Uh, you are.
No, it is. Yeah, one's required by law and I even said that was, that was already there.
Is that the one business person?
Yes.
Okay, so now going down to five.
So I'll go back, you're reading.
Going down to what? Resident, one resident in the community who is not a parent employee or related to parents or employees of the district. Do we have to have that in there?
That for. No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because there was like two business people, two, and so I, we talked about if we just reduce both those to one, essentially still keeps like two versus.
But since we're, okay, I see, so the, the difference is that like, for example, on the number one, students are enrolled. So they're, they're community members of the students that are enrolled. And then this provides opportunity, uh, four and five provide opportunities for individuals within our community who may or may not have students enrolled in our school to be a part of the DAC.
I mean, even if they're not in like homeschooling, if they're not there, or if they're at a different school, but I don't think that requires, or, yeah, it did not say that, but this is what you guys have had probably for a while.
That was added, that, that was added like a year or so ago, when we were trying to equalize the numbers.
Oh, okay.
And what the law says, at least one person who's involved in business or industry in the community within the school district boundaries, so that's. So that's all the comportable law.
One D, yes.
So my inclination then is to remove. Five. I think we had trouble getting some of that. You mean, uh, number six?
No, well, it will be six again now.
It will be six. Let me clarify then, resident within the community, not a parent employee or related to parents or employees of the district.
I think we need to leave it in.
I'm fine with it, I'm, I could go either way because I like shrinking the overall number. And we're, and we are adding, you know, the two, the charter parent as well as a person knowledgeable about charter schools. So I could go either way on it.
Yeah.
I could go either way as well.
I mean, I don't have like a. Just neutral of some of these, so I'm glad we're discussing it because.
So Chris, you want to strike it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with striking it.
Yep.
Shrink something.
I think that just gets somebody, if it is a district accountability, and not everyone in the district has a child in the school or owns a business. And I just think it's important for that.
Like you could, you could have like a homeschool parent or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes we do retired folks.
Are we retired teachers?
We did have someone from. We've had some retired folks. Yeah, they don't have kids and they're just in the community, they're retired in the community.
Like great, great grandparents.
I mean, these people are paying a lot of taxes in the school district and I think they should have representation.
I'm persuaded.
Good point, too.
If it's not required by law, so you can put that in there, so it doesn't be filled, then we're not going to.
Should we add that?
Yeah.
It's not required by law. Oh, you did, okay.
Right, over there.
Thank you.
What are you working on?
Got a beach here and there.
These aren't rated for guys my size, so.
Oh. So, so, shall we discuss that?
No. All right, so number eight, the only change we want to make was instead of for the assistant superintendent, it would say for the superintendent's district.
Chief board member and the superintendent for the destiny.
Wait a minute, have we, we moved on to, from six?
Well, we.
Because there's some edits in here that should be changed from plural to secular.
Yeah, you're, you're right. That should say one resident is, is not a parent. Yeah, I'm sure Kelly already thought that.
Thanks, I already got that.
Two board members, the superintendent or the superintendent's.
Sometimes it just says superintendent, parentheses, or designated.
And that's what, and that's what I, that's what I think we should do here, because the, the use of the comma there suggests it's, it's, it's another person.
And four means it's only one of those three.
Right, so I would strike the comma and put that in parentheses for the superintendent's decision.
Yeah, it could be that way.
She just took herself off to the back.
And those are not required by law, right?
Board members?
Uh, let's see, it says at least three parents, at least one teacher, at least one school administrator, at least one person involved.
Board members aren't term limited. There's something about being on the DAC, board member being on the DAC and they're not term limited, so maybe it is required.
I don't think it is required in the law because I think my interpretation of that would be that the district accountability committee is to advise the board in full.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
You'd be advising yourself. I think that.
I have conversations with myself all the time.
I know, me too.
Yeah, no, I just think we could put in the parentheses under not term limited, we'd all say not required by law. Because it's apparently not, just to be consistent.
Okay, we have that.
Really what the not term limited needs is that, that doesn't have to be up for annual every year, because board member committee designation usually aligns with the board committee representatives and when you guys do like officers and stuff, so it's kind of less than twice on it. So it's not like every year, trying to figure that out. But I will put not term limited and also not required by law.
Right, and we wouldn't want our superintendent to be term limited from the, from the DAC guy there. Anything that, they want a term limit, it sounds like a one year.
That's where then you can designate.
There you go.
One last change.
Now I see it, now I see it. No, but I think that was smart. I like that.
Okay, so we got that one. On to number seven.
Okay, and that's like a quote from the law, except for the second sentence.
Except for, um.
There's an "uh" in there that shouldn't be.
Yeah, with the "uh". Oh.
Which brings me to a question. Um, because we're talking about referred by their charter school or schools, will they be subject to the board's approval?
I think it should be the same across the board.
Yeah, I mean, they would like, but if it's, um, you would hope that charter school would, could be a parent from there, so if they are sending out the same application or if it's a Google Doc or however, send it as long as it's apparent that it's from the charter, so we can take that out, I just wanted to make sure that.
And I, I would take it out, A, to increase flexibility of the, the board members, but B, so that they're treated more equally with the district schools, because we're not, we're not saying that whoever's, you know, recommend, whoever comes to us as a parent from, um, gateway has to be recommended by Ashley Lawson, so I think that gives the charter school a little bit too much, um, you know, they're, they're giving, they don't need that special privilege.
No, and I don't think we wanted to give special privilege. I think it was our discussion in that, our discussion on the whole thing included about, and we might have over discussed it to the point where it was too much, but, uh, but you know that happens. Love the Dell.
Sorry.
Thank you Dell for appreciating this, but, uh.
And of course, they can make recommendations just like the principals.
They would recommend.
And it was like a, yeah, and you want that just so we know that it's a parent coming from there, so I don't know, is someone like checking and verifying, hey, is this, is this person enrolled and has a kid enrolled? Because anyone can say that. I think that's where we went back and forth, making sure that we're not just picking some random, you know, someone who says that they are a parent, and so we just.
Have to check every.
We need to check every.
And there, I did send an application, because I saw also to merit parents and to teachers, because at the time we left last week, I thought we had a teacher and a parent, so.
I would buy the statute.
That's where the application, the application did go out to, um, teachers and parents.
So we're actually gonna, I'm asking them to provide a teacher, unless it's in.
It could be a person that's not.
So I would just totally cross out the whole said parent shop, because the rest of it is.
True.
But you did say that by one, I don't know where that got in there, it's probably an edit from us talking about it. At least one parent appointed to the committee is the parent of a student enrolled in a charter school authorized by the local school board. School board has authorized any charter schools.
I think you just strike your second sentence here, you're fine.
Right.
On, you're on number eight, you could.
You could, should be represented by.
District. Authorized charter schools.
Oh, okay. Each district authorized?
Well, no, that's not what the statute says. Does it say au- district authorized charter school?
There is no other charter school that is authorized.
It says authorized.
No, no, BOSI's authorized merit last year.
But they weren't a charter school, they were a contract.
Oh, they were a con, that's right.
So at least one parent's appointed to the committee is the parent of a student enrolled in a charter.
You could say each district charter school.
So yeah, it's district charter, but to answer Chris's question, it does say, it's just a district charter school that's authorized by the local school board, so.
Say each district charter school.
Each district charter.
Okay. So added district.
And then take out said parent.
Yes, all that whole line.
Minus the one parent totally required by law.
Yeah, we should keep that.
And then one person in the community that has demonstrated knowledge of charter schools.
And then you can just take out for my turn, as long as there's, which it sounds like, because we talked about this.
Well, we wanted them to have, make sure that they had representative, that they would recommend people that they wanted to represent them on the DAC, and then the board would make the decision on who that was according to their recommendations or their list of applicants.
That's the third one.
Yeah, so just make sure that we're consistent, because we're gonna be asking the same of our principals.
Right, plus, this is not appropriate for the charter schools to refer, because the person may not even come from charter school. It's just one person in the community with demonstrated knowledge of charter schools, so.
I think we added this in last second after Chris said it, because we had this discussion, we just want to make sure if it's not a community, like what if I, you know, so, so often, you know, in our communities, like, I am very knowledgeable in charter schools, it's like, but what if they're not, and so I think it's like how you.
They apply next.
I think that's for last year for all the.
Oh.
Yeah, but that just, that factors into.
Yeah, how you demonstrate that.
So what were you going, what were you saying, David?
Just like Chris was saying, strike referred by the charter schools, it makes it consistent with how the other schools are done, and it's just a direct rule from the law, so.
Go ahead.
Like instead of probably something we go over, just have to be half the school law.
I sat quiet most of the time, I guess.
That was a joke. So then the only other modification is term, well, the term is one year, and the Board of Education may renew membership for the maximum of four consecutive terms. Vacancies shall be appointed by the Board of Education.
So it was a three-year term limit, now it's four-year.
Well, it's a one-year.
And that, that's how, I mean, I know, but that's how it was.
It was, yeah, that was not changed, like, the period was bold, by the way, and then, after the one year.
So it's added a year to the term.
Yeah, we added a year, and then we said consecutive.
The vacancies shall be appointed by the Board of Education. Is it really an appointment or will the vacancies be filled? You know, that to me is like, wouldn't we want to, I mean, it's, they were initially brought on according to this policy through the appointment of the board. So it's really, I don't know.
I think the reason to have that in there is because it's actually different with the school accountability committee. In the school accountability committee, the law requires that actually the SAC appoints any vacancies by a majority of the SAC.
Yes.
So it's to distinguish how the board.
Probably explain that as well, but then it also said approval by the Board of Education, so I think we just switched it to, but yeah, the SAC is different in my statute, um, in the DAC, so.
I'm good with the edits as we've discussed them.
So we are finished with, I am, I am as well for GP seven.
Now this is where Kelly gets to read through her scratches and try to bring clarity.
Do you guys want me just to review them real quick?
Sure.
So we have no changes on page one. Page two, number five becomes number seven, number six becomes number five, number seven becomes number six. Then down under B, on number one, we are striking represented in each school SAC. Under number two, we're adding, um, the word elementary, so it says one elementary teacher from, one elementary school teacher, okay, one elementary teacher and one secondary teacher. No, we kept that as.
Yeah, we kept that as it is.
Now, now I see my other note, see?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
No, you're fine.
Okay, um, but we are, okay, that one stayed. Then number four is coming back on, and we are adding, um, we're taking off as available and it's just gonna say not required by law.
Yes.
Okay, number, so then where you guys had your edits, it goes back to number five.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. And number five then goes back to number six, and it's gonna say one resident in the community who is not a parent employee or related to parents or employees of the district, and then in parentheses, not required by law. Then on the next, the last page, that becomes number seven, and we're gonna say two board members and the superintendent, and then in parentheses, more designated, and we're adding, it does still say not term limited, but it will also say not required by law. Then number seven becomes number eight, and it'll say each district charter school shall be represented by, and, um, take out the word "of", and then we're striking said parent shall be referred by their charter schools. And number eight becomes number nine, and we're taking out referred by the charter schools.
Okay.
And the sentence after that stays as.
Correct.
I do have to circle back around to one thing here, um, and maybe we could just push on this logic for a second. What has been revised now to number six, under membership being six, one resident in the community who is not a parent or employee. Can we put a period there? Like, what's the logic about or related to parents or employees?
It was.
It's a small town, I mean.
You guys.
Yeah, I know. Is there any history on this?
Yeah, I think what the history was, was, um, was, there was this perception that if somebody was related to an individual who was connected to the district, they'd be biased in some way. But it's a small town, and I don't know if we need to limit people's, you know, relations.
We employ like seventy percent of the town, right?
Right, so I don't think we need to limit it by relations. I don't think, I don't think we're dealing with nepotism, is that the right word? I don't think we're dealing with that here. So I would recommend that we put a period after not parents or employees, and then strike out related or related to parents or employees of the district.
That works for me, and, and the law only requires that the te- um, I'm sorry, the parents themselves not be employees of the district or related to employees of the district, unless you can't find any other parents.
Unless you can't find them.
Yeah.
So. I think that's probably where that language came from, but I don't, I don't think it's, I agree with you. What you, what you suggested.
I agree. So it would say one resident in the community who is not a parent or employee, period, looking not a parent.
Employee of the district.
Okay.
That's it. Streamline it there.
Yeah.
Open the net a little.
All right, are we finished with seven?
I think so.
I think she'll be ready, so that's good. All right, so that was seven.
If you guys are ready for that, then yes, you guys could go down, you could actually do a motion in the second.
I was going to ask, I didn't hear what you said.
That you could vote on it. This is the only one that has to have a vote.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we approve the amendments to GP seven in accordance with the discussion that we've had here, but as Kelly has read it out.
Second.
Roll call.
Austin?
Aye.
Illinghor?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rosterholtz?
Aye.
I think that's, well done, it only took you an hour and a half to.
We're not done.
I know, I'm just saying, we're getting a sense though that this is labor intensive, and that this is really good hard work, and it requires the time needed to do it. So I'm just, I am literally. This is your first policy edit officially, isn't it?
We may, we may change this to the, the sensitive subjects, but.
Yeah, but we did that, yeah.
Yeah.
We mean, was that?
So, great, all right.
So it is now seven thirty, and.
I would say that it's actually been two hours, maybe, you know, that was an hour, hour and a half to session last week on it too, so, yeah, just to add to your labor intensive.
Chris had a lot of issues.
I, I have a feeling this one's going to take more time, and I just want to make sure that we have good time to go over our, keep working on our vision.
Fine, no, we have to get to this.
Before we do the vid, I'm, I'm not saying we're gonna strike it, I'm not suggesting that at all, I'm just.
Yeah, we have to do this because we have to.
We have to do this in court later, so.
I wasn't suggesting anything about change not doing it.
Okay.
I was just saying, we still have a super important part tonight, that I want to make sure that we have enough time for.
This to me is one of the important parts.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying that it isn't important.
Do you want to switch it to, and then have a break, and then before we get to vision, is that what you're sort of gearing up, like you need a break?
Yeah, so let's have a break before we go on our vision.
Oh, okay.
Anybody need a breakdown? Let's go on. All right, let's start with the reading. Of A, the.
This one doesn't have to be red, doesn't have to be red.
That's correct. I mean, they can, if they want to look at the changes, but this is a district admin policy. So if you guys are thinking of the changes, we'll just make them.
Just go straight to the changes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, save some time.
Well, and at the top, Kelly can fix those moments, because you just changed them back here.
We did.
Right, we made a few edits.
Yeah.
So Kelly can fix those.
Okay. So we'll go to the first change. Is, uh, just to give it some perspective, if you go down past the bullet points, then there are no changes to the first paragraph. And then the board shall appoint to the DAC and making appointments that shall ensure the extent practical that, then we go have those three bullet points, so then it goes down to the next paragraph. So let's read that paragraph, and we'll read it.
Okay, and this is just, um, putting it into consistency with GP seven, which is, members of the district accountability committee shall serve a term of one year with a maximum of four consecutive terms, vacancies shall be filled, and here's that, we're striking majority action of the remaining members of the committee, vacancies shall be filled by the Board of Education, and that's, that's just bringing it, making it consistent with the policy we just approved.
Exactly.
So any discussion about that?
I do have a question about the next statement, having read this longer, does the chair have to be apparent on the DAC also, because on the SAC, the chair has to be.
I, this does have to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we talked about that too, is that something you want to specify? So we talked about that too, is that something you want to specify in there that we just had to refer to or?
Maybe it doesn't have to be said, but I know sometimes when things are pushed out, it helps if it's in policy for us to refer to it. And some of us will, why does it have to? I guess we could say because the law says it has to.
Chair from, it's, so like the committee will elect a chair from its parent representatives instead of membership because the.
Do you mean, do you have the law because I have it?
The law, yeah, the law says the members of each school district accountability committee shall select from among the parent representatives serving on the committee, a member to serve as chair or co-chair of the committee. And the local school board shall establish the length of term for which the committee chair or co-chair shall serve. So we could say.
Maybe it said the committee will elect a parent to chair.
That's good.
I mean, obviously from its membership.
Yeah. To chair.
Or will, will elect a parent from its membership to chair.
Or, or co-chair the committee.
So where are we changing the charges?
So look at that last sentence, Sue, and it says the committee shall elect. So it will say the committee will elect a parent to be chair or co-chair of the committee. Comma, establish, and, comma, and establishes schedule. We all good with that?
Yes.
Can you read that one for a second? I just want to make sure I captured it.
The committee will elect a parent to chair or co-chair the committee. And then it says, comma, and.
Or co-chair?
Oh, that's what the statute, that's what the statute.
He said committee again, like committee will elect a, do you have to add committee after that?
First on membership. Elect a parent to serve as chair or co-chair. You like that, Kelly, the committee will elect a parent to serve as chair or co-chair. And then you could, and then we have a comma, I would add the word and there. And to establish a schedule, and to add the word and to.
Are you striking out from its membership?
Yes.
You could say a parent from its membership to serve as co-chair.
Yeah, it needs to be, sorry, or any parent can come in.
I have more scruples, I'm going to make sure you guys, sorry, Kelly, it's not good.
I, I like, I like, he was third revised.
The committee will elect a parent from its membership to serve as chair slash co-chair.
Or a co-chair.
Or co-chair. Comma, and establish.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
We need further discussion about that. Let's move on. So the next change is down on continuing down under school accountability committees, the third bullet. One, or do you want to read that, Sue?
One person who is involved in business in the community within the district's boundaries who we struck from the community.
Did we just change that to match with the policy in there? Because I think that's why that came out, the word.
It just, it matches GP seven.
Yeah.
And it's redundant because it says, well, I guess the way you guys have written it, yours, you still have community in there and that tracks with the language of the statute.
With the district boundaries, that's what we're tracking with the statute, with the district boundaries. Because if you have one member from the community, I, I don't know.
It could just be business in the, I mean, in the community if you go on and who has involved in business within the district's boundaries.
Yeah, I think we just didn't language it the right way.
Did it not have business and community? It did only have one.
For the membership.
Yeah, that, that was most, it just says one person from the community.
Yeah, at least, it's, so it's a twenty-two, eleven, four-oh-one, one A, Roman numeral B. At least one person who is involved in business or industry in the community. So it's the same language as in the three-oh-one.
Okay, yeah, I was like, I didn't come out of this, this is definitely, I think we looked at the statute.
But they don't really mean in the community, they mean within the boundaries of the district.
Yes.
But that's the, you wouldn't choose a business person from the Springs.
No, but our community is, I mean, if you start going down the hill a little ways and you just, you know, our community extends down almost, I'm just saying, our community is bigger than our district.
You might not be able to, somebody from the school or the house.
Listen, I'm not married to this, we were just going by the statute, I think we just.
What do we, what do we?
The question is, is the, is the, is the person in the district or is it business in the community? Because you can have people who are involved in business whose business is down in the Springs, but they and their children are a part of this district.
It says who was involved in business in the community.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming the business.
Yeah, the statute, it says, it says at least one person who is involved in business or industry in the community.
Right.
Period.
And it doesn't say where they live, it just says that they have a business and then.
True. It doesn't, it doesn't tie it to where the business is located.
That's interesting because in the past, we just put community members on. So that's where we've sometimes had grandparents or people in the community that are retired. So I didn't know quite why I always had statutes that they had to be involved in business.
Or industry.
So if you're retired, you have, they can serve on the.
Right.
Unless they have a business or industry.
Well, if they're retired, they don't.
And just as a clarification, we're not tracking here, but if it is, like Chris said, if it's a, if a business is in the community, you could theoretically have somebody on a school accountability committee who lives in Colorado Springs and kids go to Colorado Springs.
But has a business.
But has a business, here, so they could be on our school accountability.
Yes, well, but we've added the within the district's boundaries.
Right.
Person or the business.
Dave, so that we're now in the school accountability committees, we need to be in the four-hundred. I, Russell Holtz, sorry, another day. I think we took that and we added it to match exactly what I said on the DAC too.
Yeah, we tried, they probably made them consistent with the DAC and the SEC.
Yeah.
The statutes aren't the same.
They're not, they're not.
We're wanting to stay.
I want to verify. I'm looking at four-oh-one.
So, yeah, four-oh-one does not have the in the district's boundaries, the three-oh-one does.
The three-oh-one does, we want to, this is why we're discussing it.
But the four-oh-one doesn't have just community.
No, at least one person who's involved in business or industry in the community. So, so here's, so we're looking at, here's what it does apart for the, for the SAC. The principal of the school or the principals designate, at least one teacher who provides instruction at the school. At least three parents or legal guardians of students enrolled in the school. At least one adult member of an organization of parents, teachers, and students recognized by the school. And at least one person who's involved in the, in business or industry in the community. But I, I like the idea of making sure that the person who's involved in business in the community, I would say, and lives within the district's.
Okay, Chris.
So they're invested not only in their business, but in, as a family.
So you could say who's involved in business in the community and residing within the district's boundaries.
I like that.
All right.
Kelly, did you see two on one, that there's a, it needs a return, what says one teacher? The bullet, the first two bullets right together.
Are you?
Oh, I see it, I did not. Where it says three parents or guardians and it says one teacher, that needs a return, so this is a bullet.
Under the school accountability committees, three parents and then one teacher provided.
Here's where that does a name where you can see the principal.
Okay, the next, are we finished with the bullet point three? Kelly, can you read what you have on that one? Bullet point three.
One person who's involved in business in the community and resides within the district's boundaries.
Yes, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right. On to the next one.
That's the one adult member of an organization of parents, that's right from the statute. And then you guys have added, a list of all applicants must be provided to the Board of Education, comma, with those recommended by the principals. I, I like that.
That one we just, we added that from our conversation at the last meeting.
Yeah, that actually came from the prior board, you guys. Or not prior board, but prior conversation, prior meeting.
So can you give me a bullet point on that conversation? Just where, is that's.
I mean, that's just, that's just necessary if you're adopting that the board shall appoint the members of the SAC. So it's that you'll get all the people who apply. And one of the things that we've discovered since then is that each school is doing it a little bit differently. Some were sending out, you know, notice and request for applications to, to people who live in school. Others were kind of just handpicking who they wanted. I think Gateway was straddling a line in the sense that according to Principal Lawson, she appointed everybody who applied. So she only got one applicant for each position. And so it all kind of worked out that way. But Principal Rexford at Summit indicated she kind of had to go on a hunt to find a teacher representative and, and that's.
No, not a teacher.
I thought it was.
She had two that applied last year, so she let one serve last year and one serve this year.
Yeah, okay. So, in any case, the idea is that we want to open it up so that anybody can apply, but we also want to hear the recommendations of the principals.
So it's tied to, so it's tied to another, on the next page.
Yeah.
About the appointment by the Board of Education. Which we'll get to that in a minute.
So the bullets not needed here because it talks about in the next paragraph, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of like you took it out at the DAF one, remember you moved it up into, these bullets are the membership of the DAF.
Yeah.
Let's read them, Dave.
And then the paragraph is a couple of years, it says members should be recommended by principals for.
I would, I would move though that a list of all applicants will be provided to the Board of Education to that paragraph and then, and then it says, and then you can have, and shall be recommended by the principals. So it's clear that we're not just only choosing from the recommendations of the principals. Those are supplementary. And then I, I don't understand the bullet though about the high school principal will recommend one student because the middle school and the high school have traditionally had a student on school accountability.
Yeah, we, do we need to add, could we amend it to say, we forgot about the middle school, but can you say, do we need to add another bullet or can we write?
High school and middle school?
Yeah, can we just?
I think you just put a student at the school and in parentheses, middle school and high school. Because you have a list of people here. So one student from the school and then in parentheses, middle school and high school.
Oh, wait, we're not, okay.
I like that.
I'm trying. Okay, one student from. What'd you say, Tina, one student from?
One student from the school.
Oh, from the school and then in parentheses, high school.
And then it's like, middle school and high school.
I think that's good, but I would add there, parentheses, not required by law, because that would be the only one that is not required by the law.
And then we're not having anything about principals representing?
I don't think it makes sense to do it in that group since that's setting out what the school accountability committees will consist of.
So we're going to move that to the next page. And the first whole paragraph on that.
Right, I would, I would, yeah, I would make the first sentence of that paragraph there. All applicants shall be forwarded to the Board of Education, period, members of committee shall be appointed, shall be recommended.
To start with, with that bullet point, how about all applicants shall be forwarded to the Board of Education, comma, along with the recommendations of each school principal.
Are you on the second paragraph?
The one that begins members of the committee?
You don't want, you don't want a list of all applicants shall, or you, what, I'm just, I'm trying to break down what you were saying.
Shall be forwarded to.
I think that's just a one that does begin with. Along with the recommendations of each school principal. That way, everybody gets a shot at being considered and the school principals can weigh in as well. Which honestly, we would want because they have some inside knowledge.
Yeah. Absolutely.
We're striking a list of on the previous page, under each school accountability, we're striking a list, we're striking that. Because we're placing it in a.
We're moving it up.
Moving it up one next page.
What?
Great, stop.
I like those two minds.
Well, I have this one, this is striking, this is striking.
Oh, this is what it says.
Okay, that's where, I thought you had it on the other side, okay, it's right here. I started, all applicants, all applicants shall be forwarded, okay, forwarded to the Board of Education.
Huh?
Along with, I think our members of, along with recommendations. This comes. All applicants shall be forwarded to the Board of Education. Along with. The recommendations. Okay, then, this is, this is, all applicants, all applicants shall be, oh, so that's it. Shall be forwarded to the Board of Education, comma, along with the recommendations, recommendations. Thank you.
For appointment.
Got that?
Be on your page.
The, the one we just did?
Yeah.
Okay. So it says all applicants shall be forwarded to the Board of Education, comma, along with the recommendations for appointed by the Board of Education.
No, along with the recommendations of each school principal.
The recommendations of. All applicants shall be forwarded to the Board of Education, comma, along with the principal recommendations.
I'm lost, so sorry.
Along with the recommendations.
Along with the recommendations.
Of each school principal.
Oh, it's, okay, now I got it, thank you.
So then, the next.
Or, or, or.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Going to get sense.
So does that encompass that entire paragraph? Members of the community shall be recommended to the school.
There's, well, there's still a second sentence there about ensuring to the extent practical. Which is, which is a requirement by the law.
So that part required by the law is the appointment of the board. I know that it's stipulated within the law that we have that authority or we can delegate that authority. So this feels like the most seismic change because it's more than just procedure, it's cultural. And so I just simply want to provide an opportunity, if you could, to, let's apply the why. What, what's the impetus of this change? Why does this feel important to this board? People going to make this. I mean, it's been a practice for the school accountability committees to be appointed by their principals for a number of years, if not decades. And so with this shift, I think it would behoove us to be able to answer why we do this. What are we hoping to, what are we hoping to solve, what are we hoping to avoid? Can you give some rationale lines for the new person?
This returns the power to the people, not school administrators.
Okay, so that's the, a pretty major philosophical adjustment, and you're feeling like that's what this is doing. This is returning the power to the people. And, and this board, whether elected or appointed, are representatives of the people.
They are.
So I'm, I'm really trying to understand it here, that's why I'm legitimately asking you this. I'm not, I'm not poking a stick at anything, I just want to be able to understand. So this feels pretty foundational, the shift of power.
Can I, can I answer your question as well?
Uh huh.
If you go back to GP seven, the introduction to it. Board committee principals. Board committees or liaisons, when used, will support the, will support the work of the board and reinforce the wholeness of the board's job. And then it goes on to say, to never interfere with delegation of authority from the board to the superintendent.
Great.
So, what, one of the reasons I want to do that is because these are, ultimately, even the SAC is an advisory to the district. And so, I think that it's important, we all choose who our mentors are in our life, if we choose to have one. And, who, who we get advice from. And we choose that from a pool of people, however we might select them. I think that it's important to a board that they choose by recommendation those people that they feel aligned with their vision, mission, and goals. So, not that they are group thinking, or are going to go along with everything, but that, that they, to some extent, embrace that vision, I think is important.
It, it talks about how, about the district's purpose, so, and the policy about members of the, you know, back here over at Sacredex, but talking about that having, sharing in line vision with the district's purpose.
Right, which is that vision and strategy, those strategies.
I remember why.
Not necessarily like programs and tactics, or however that lays out, and that you're in it. So that is why that was important to me.
And I think the other question is, why should the principals retain sole exclusive authority over a school accountability committee? Because you have a high school principal just handpicking. Didn't he solicit an application?
He solicited applications.
Okay, that wasn't where I was.
He solicited interest last spring.
Last spring.
So he held, he held principal coffees, he held events, and he asked for people. He just seated his deck in the spring.
I don't want to get very, but, there's a, there's now a balance between a school accountability committee not being solely chosen by the principal. You could have teachers who are not in agreement with the principal, who don't want to apply, because they don't think they would ever get chosen. So, this allows the school principal to still have an input and make their recommendations, but it also allows people to apply directly to the board, who may not be in agreement with the way that the administration is governing that school. And that reflects the ultimate purpose of a school accountability committee.
How are we going to ascertain that?
The same way that the principals ascertain which parents should go on. The same way we ascertain which parents and teachers go on the DAC.
I would, I would venture to say that most of the principals have relationship with the parents that are applying for, and that, I mean, so there's a relational dynamic there, but I think, I know I'm not going to have. And so I'm just curious, like, again, just applying the why, it's important, because that points to value. And one of the things that you're stating as a state of value is that the authority of all subcommittees that are going to be in support of this board needs to be, the, the power to select those people needs to be with this board, and not delegated to the, the school administration.
I think, I think that's more of the board is reserving, but you could even look at it as this. The, our valued employees, the principals of the school, are making recommendations. That comes very seriously. But the board reserves the right to appoint those people and to select those people. But, you know, we trust employees, otherwise they wouldn't be employees. It's just, I think that because of the initial statement in this, they, they serve the board, and I think that the board should have input in it.
Okay, and I'm hearing a little bit of, I wouldn't say inconsistency, but I'm hearing a couple of different things that I need clarification on. Because on one hand, I'm hearing you say, I love diversity of opinions and voice within a group, and then on the other hand, I'm hearing you say, I want people in this group that are going to align with the, the purpose or the values. I think that's the word. And so, that feels a little bit inconsistent for me personally. I think that, and I get it, I mean, I get it, that there would possibly be people who might apply, who know that they're going to be vetted by this board and not by, by the principal. But I just, I, I want you to kind of put a little more language around what you're thinking there as far as ensuring that the, the school accountability committees are, are, the members of that are, like, I don't know what, what are you saying? Agreed, agreeing with this board.
Able to work with the board would be one thing.
Okay.
For instance, you know, I think that in certain perspectives, diversity is a good thing. In our nation, we have people from all over the world that come here. And diverse, they bring diversity, and if it goes into a melting pot, and we're united towards a common goal, now that's good. And when we're talking about an organization. So, if we don't have, or we're not united toward a common goal, then diversity is a liability.
Well, it just points all, all the more to our work of creating vision statement, purpose statement. Those, those statements that then help us orient towards a common thing. So, yes, and, you were going to say?
Oh, you have man, I don't want to, sorry.
No, it's fine, I just, I lost it, so good.
Uh, well, I'm, I got a little off topic here anyways, but going back to your question, I guess, just making sure that, you know, we are soliciting to the whole community for the SAC, I think, you know, and I'm still reading, you know, and I, I took that email wrong from the high school, too, because I was confused on like, where the processes are, you know? Are they doing it in the spring, and what if a new parent moves here from the spring, and they're here in August at high school, like, well, they have a chance to do that. And how do we, you know, sort of help that, where all the parents that have that role, or like, a new parent moves to Gateway, what if they don't even know? And so if the parents aren't going to email, they know, I, Gateway got their email and it's great, and there are different things, or Katie had, you know, had trouble. So if there's a process of like, we're just sitting at, to all the parents, does it feel like, you know, oh, this principal, you know, I'm curious, and I haven't, you know, signed up, and, but I haven't, don't have a relationship with the principal, but what if that's something I want to do, because my kid's in there? So, how do we, how do you, you know, help with that?
And I think we've realized this fall, I mean, we've talked about DAC and SAC for a lot of years, right? About how we use DAC and SAC. And we did come, I mean, because you saw, those of you that came, you saw a brand new training with a brand new handbook that very much laid out the process of the DAC and SAC. We also laid out an application, but three of our buildings had already moved forward, because that's how they've done it historically. So two of our buildings used the application to solicit, but they all solicited in different ways. So as a district, we said, you know, we need to do a little this with how we do this, because then people know, every August, we're going to solicit for this information. Every September, we're going to appoint people. So we need that consistency.
That's good.
I think a reminder though is that the SAC, because I hear a lot of conversation, the SAC advises the principal. So the SAC does not advise the board, the SAC advises the principal, and it's advice to the principal, just like the DAC advises the board. And it's just advice to the board. You can take it or leave it from, from that committee. So it's, it's not a shift, it's a, it's an advisory board to the principal, like the DAC is an advisory board to the, the Board of Education. So they, they have a little bit of different goals that they're working, I mean, same kind of ideas. Budget, UIP, safety, parent engagement, those are the crux of that group, and they're advising those to different people.
So then I want to ask, like, and it hasn't been brought up tonight, but I have heard this board talk about the value for individual school leadership economy at some levels. And so, I want to, I want to help reconcile, at least in my own thinking, like, where's, because of that distinction, like, SAC is advising, basically, the principal and the administration of that particular school, not the district. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and you can tell me I'm wrong, but I believe over the course of the last nine months, I've, I've at least seen energy towards, you know, like, the value for school economy. And I'm just curious if we might be at risk of removing some of that economy and some of that by, by requiring that this board appoint every SAC member or qualify to the schools, because we don't get that.
Well, let's correct something. Which is that it's too narrow a view to say that the SAC only advises the principal, because, it's true, it does say that in the law. To recommend to the principal the school priorities for spending school monies in the same subsection of one A, the school accountability committee for a district public school shall send a copy of its recommended spending priorities to the school district accountability committee and to the local school board. So it's, it's not a just for the principal's eyes only kind of thing.
True, thank you.
But what about the culture, and, I don't know if this is true, I had a parent tell me that he sat on the DAC, and that the principal would come in and give, you know, presentations as almost as if they were the chair, and then it was like, that was it. I just didn't feel like they had.
The DAC or the SAC?
The SAC.
So that's where, that's where you saw some revision, where we said, our DAC and SAC policies have not been very tight. And so that's where you saw that we talked about, then you have to elect a chair that's a parent.
Yeah.
Because that's not always been the case.
And that's, and so when I was like, well, that's why we're going through some of this, there was a new training, and I said that to the parent, like, oh, maybe that's something I want to change. And so when you talk about the culture, maybe there's something that we do need to just sort of check in and make sure that our SACs are coherent, and it's not the same, you know, I went back and forth on it. I didn't have an opinion, I didn't work on the Sacredex. I'm really trying to like, analyze, and I think it's a good question, because I've been asking myself why for a week. And, when you hear stuff like that, I'm like, well, I want it. Like, if you don't feel like you're, you're a parent, and you're here in the district, like, you don't want to join the SAC, because you don't feel comfortable in the principals, we need to change. And that's what, and I told her, there was a new training, and there's something there. So I don't know if we're discouraging parents, and it just becomes like, an echo chamber of who we want, and then, but at the same time, I see where you're like, why are we just handpicking? Do we want that? So, you know, I've been back and forth on it.
Yeah, because it comes back to the question of how are we going to vet these folks? If we don't know that. And I know that we have applications and we can read their answers.
And still be going to recommend.
Here's, here's the thing though, if this, if the principal makes a recommendation, the board of directors can fully accept their recommendations. It just gives the option, the final say to the board, yea or nay, on an individual, on an entire group, but they could accept the whole thing, just as the, as the principal recommends. So it doesn't automatically mean that we're going to, that the board, or any future board, would, they can do whatever they want. Ultimately, decisions of boards. Because the board committees, when used, will support the work of the board and reinforce the wholeness of the board's job.
Chris, it has been accustomed to, I've been approached by several, and there will be, I believe, interest in these slots, but I've been approached by four or five people that showed interest, have been, have followed up with the principals repeatedly, and they were, they were told right off the bat, it's full. So, it, it was, there was no continuity between the schools choosing, they did their own thing, and I think we're coming together, we, we have to, all the schools are in, in the district. They, they're, they're accountable to their own schools, but it seems like we've gotten off the rails. It's been doing this thing, and I, and I think it, it, it needed to be done, what, what we're doing. And, and it is at the board's discretion.
You're saying vetted together, right, Steve?
Yeah. I didn't go to the training, but that's why Kina sent the training package, that was really good. And I heard from David Sue, that it was a great training up here. So it is just really informative of what might have gone through the cracks prior, from what I'm hearing.
So I have, I have zero issue with rigor and bringing consistency in training not only the, the SAC members, but also school administration on how to facilitate this in a consistent way, I have zero problem with that. I think that's, that's in and of itself, I think, a huge part of the solution to a lot of the frustration that we may have been hearing within the community or whatever. I think the, and I understand the rationale, I just feel like it's a pretty, like I said, it's a very seismic shift, and I think that if you want it, we're going to have it, but I, I think I personally really do honor and respect the fact that each individual school administrator has relational equity with the people. Now, therein lies some of the challenges I'm hearing, it's like, okay, so it can be lopsided.
But you raised a good point, Chris, because the, the members of this board should have those relationships, and this encourages the development of those relationships. This board should be in touch with the people of the community as much as possible. We should not be isolated from the members, the stakeholders, nor should we be isolated from the schools. So I think this is a way to blend that together in a way that can increase those, those relationships in the community, and hopefully alleviate any frustrations within the community. Although, I would say frustrations within the community had a hand in the election of several of the members of this board.
That's fine, that's, that's the way it is. I just know that what I'm hearing from you, Dave, is that at least, and I honestly, like, I have not surveyed people, I haven't talked, but for me, like, I'm, I'm having a more objective view coming into this, thinking the optics on this is, again, back to that question, how are we going to vet these folks? If we don't know them, it's like, is it like?
Is that where possibly our relationship with the principals will come into play? I mean, we could have a conversation with the principals, and this is why they want this person, or, or this is why they chose that.
That's great, if that actually happened, I love that. Because honestly, if, if that didn't happen, then I would be suspect of, you know, this board leaning a little bit more on that side of, okay, we only want people who agree with us.
But that's not what I said.
No, and that's the difference between, because you don't have that concern that we can vet people for the DAC. That you haven't raised that concern. You're only raising it with the SAC, but the distinction, right, is that unlike the DAC, the SAC specifically has that the principal shall make recommendations to the board. So that, that input is still, is still part of it and protected, it's just balanced.
And I think the reason why I didn't bring that up is because I felt like there was a clear distinction that the SAC was advising the administration of that particular school and not the district as a whole.
But it turns out, it is a little problem.
Okay, so that being said, I just, I just feel like, we need to be very clear on the why. Because if, if left to, and honestly, it's like, we've got to be candid about it. I mean, if it's like. I mean, if it's like, okay, we really do want to take the recommendations of the principal to heart, we want to have conversations with those folks, and we are really going to apply some discernment that's going to be influenced and informed by that conversation, then great. If it's like, look, I'm just going to say it, and this may push a button, so this is a trigger warning.
A trigger warning? Why do you go to the smokeless shape?
Too much. But if it's like, yeah, we don't want any SAC member who was part of the recall effort, then just say it. I don't know, I'm hearing that. I'm just like, if we don't honestly, like, do the work of community relations with this, because it is such, and not only community relations, but also administration relations with the different schools, if we're not careful with that, and we're not clear on what the motives are, then we run the risk of being misunderstood, this board being, why are we misunderstood? And I want to avoid that. I want the heart behind this to be clear. And how would you communicate the heart behind it? Now that you've heard this, how would you recommend we communicate that so that the people hear our heart? How would you do that? Well, I'm not the one making this change. Yeah, but you're part of the change.
Well, you're going to vote against the change.
Yeah, I mean, we would like to hear.
You can understand that.
Yeah.
Firmly, yeah.
I said, you're going to vote against the change, though, right?
Well, there's no voting in this. I'm just voicing.
We can vote on it. I mean, that's easily done.
No, I mean, what do you recommend? How do you, what do you recommend? Aligning a bit more with the tone, the timber of what you were saying related to, yeah, we want to hear from the principals. We actually respect their opinions, and ultimately, this board is the deciding factor. That's one thing. Coming out of the gate with, we're taking the power from the administrators of their schools and bringing it back to the people, that, okay, technically, that's true.
I don't think there's anything offensive about that sentiment. That's the foundation of democracy. If you have a problem with power being placed in the hands of the people, then we'll just agree to disagree.
Well, and I think one of the things that has also fundamentally, like, been massaged here is a question of, is this a governance policy board or is this an operations board? Because we're starting to get more into the operations dynamic with this.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's an important question, but is that...
We have always been that way.
Always been what way?
We've always been more focused on being involved in the operations of the school district. Otherwise, we wouldn't have come in and taken the position that we did about changing controversial subject policy or chartering merit academy.
It's just good to hear.
That's been said forever, right? In the campaign, at the first board meeting, over and over.
There's been breadcrumbs. I'm just saying, I'm trying to be objective. I'm just saying that it's good to hear.
And I said that in my public forum, where I said, we should be a more hands-on board and not a do-nothing board, right? I'm sure we all remember that. So there's no hiding the ball, at least where I'm concerned. But I'd like to hear your candid opinion for why we should not do this. It sounds like you don't trust that the board is capable of appointing people to do the job.
No, what you heard at the beginning of our conversation is subject to persuasion. So please understand that. That's why I'm actually asking the question, and that's why I have this rigorous conversation here. Because I actually want to know why, and then I also want to know what the vetting process is, and then I want to know what we're going to do as a board to communicate this in a way where we're not disempowering the leadership of this district. We're wanting to encourage them and empower them any way that we can to excel, and we trust them at a base level, and we also are taking the responsibility that we have been given as board members seriously, and we're upping the game on just our rigor with consistency and training and so forth. And also, what I'm hearing you say, Mr. Russell Holtz, is that you also are saying that, you know, at the end of all of this, the board is the one responsible for making the decisions on who is in the SAC. So that's fine, if that's the will of this board. I just want to ask these questions because they're big. This is a big deal. And it's good, I mean, it's fine to have these kind of like, because you guys are a reformed board. I mean, it's like, there's no hiding that. It's just like, let's just make sure that we're very clear about it and in ways that can be helping to build up people instead of derailing it.
I want to reiterate, just talking with the principals as well, because even though they choose, you know, you can list the names, whatever, I really enjoyed seeing some of the principals' responses forward and here's why. Like, they had really good responses. There's, you know, one was like, you know, it highlighted stuff from the statute, because each parent, you know, like, this parent might, you know, this student is a part of this, or a home student, this parent, you know, their kids in this. And so, you know, if we don't get those recommendations from the principal, we're just looking at names and then going off of their application and trusting what's on the application. Right, and going back to what Tina and Dela done with the rigorous checking of laws, this new training, and just getting everyone back on track, you know, I think it's been really good. So I think it has to be two-fold.
And I think it builds a relationship between the principals and the board, which needs to be done, and I think all parties need to be involved. But ultimately, what Director Russell Holtz said, it's at the board's discretion. That's fine, mine, but it doesn't mean we're not working with the principals. Doesn't mean we won't take their recommendations to heart and seriously because they're on the ground, but that's our role as a board. Where you look out for the whole district, school accountability, just work up to the district accountability.
That was the bridge that we just took down. We just removed that bridge. So the School Accountability Committee is not an automatic, parents from the School Accountability is not an automatic into the district.
But it does influence, or not influence, but it does affect the district. Each individual school is going to affect the district.
And it does report, in some respects, to the DAC and to the board.
So I just heard something that I've not sent you in the 10,000 emails I've sent you this week. And that was why the principals chose the people they chose. So that was not a request, but I'm hearing that that might be important for the principals to say, here are the members of my SAC and why I chose them. What I sent you was just kind of a rough of their process, because what was requested of me was the names of the people, not, that's what was requested of me.
I want to hear from the principals. Why would you send their recommendations?
I sent their recommendations, but you don't know their why.
Some of them had more rationals than them.
Yeah, some of your principals did have more, or some of the...
And when you talk to our principals, they'll tell you each and every person they put on their SAC and exactly why.
I think that's the point.
And so I don't know, I'm hearing that that might be important for next week, that they provide that rationale behind the members. Because they did put a lot, each and every one of them, into who they picked. And I think, I don't know how, but I think somehow the principals probably need to provide you any information on additional applicants. Because I think you potentially look at, if I'm a principal leading a SAC group, if someone's put on there that I have quite a bit of conflict with in my building, it's going to be a really hard advisory group. And I realize that it's conflict and we need to work through that, but if I have someone directly sitting in front of me that might be in my office cussing me out, because that happens to our principals, you could be putting that in a situation for our principals where they're in front of a committee and could be phasing, as a joke, sort of.
Well, I'm just curious, and I have to ask it. Would you apply that same standard to a SAC or a DAC member that has that relationship to the Board of Directors?
If they're sitting in front of you, yes. So sitting here at this committee, sitting at the table, I think that's part of the part that we've talked about, is the SAC never sits in front of the board.
But they still serve at the discretion, according to our policy.
Yeah, I know, but you asked me.
I'd be going back.
You asked me. And there might be people on the DAC that have been very disgruntled to our principals. But if our principals aren't sitting there, that's just how it goes. You know what I mean? So that's the hard part, is when you start saying, we don't want anyone on any committees that has spoken, you know, that we have people that speak ill about us.
It's a ditch on both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well as that.
I was just going to say, it should be consistent, right? Because when we talk about the DAC, there's a lot of concern that we're just going to appoint cronies and go-alongs. Then the word is diversity, but when it comes to the SACs, only the word is conflict. That should apply deeply, which is, diversity only goes so far. It can cross the line into hostility, which is counterproductive and not going to get anything done, so same point.
It's like, we're better together. Thanks for taking the time to explain some of that to me. I appreciate that. I'm glad I don't have to vote on this, but it's clear that the majority of this board is in favor of this shift. So Tina, do you have any questions for us?
No, I'll just provide why the principals picked who they think agree.
We do need to make two edits to the second sentence there, which currently reads, the principal shall ensure to the extent practicable, since it will be the board appointing, it's incumbent under the law that the appointing authority ensure to the extent practicable that the persons appointed reflect the student population significantly represented, et cetera. So we should change principal to board of education, and where it says person recommended, it should say persons appointed.
Where is that?
So we're in that paragraph, that final sentence, which begins, the principal shall ensure.
Okay, what are the changes in that?
So where it says the principal shall ensure, it should say the board of education challenger. And then, to the extent practicable, comma, that the persons, the recommended edit is that appointed be strictly recommended be there, it should remain as appointed. So it should read that the persons appointed reflect the student populations. And that'll bring us to compliance with law. Did you get that, Kelly?
I got it, thank you.
So we're good for that? No differences?
I would say the only thing we didn't really talk about was why we set a maximum of four consecutive terms, and I just wanted to state...
So we're on to the last sentence.
Yes, and I just wanted to say, the reason why you and I went back and forth on this, because if the SACs are supposed to ensure more parent engagement, this would ensure that if they have terms, they would still be, they would have four years, or even more than one year, but, you know, hopefully, we'd have more parent days that can push this as well. So it's not like someone's there from...
Yeah, it was two years at a time, which was not the same as the DAC, which was a one-year term. So this makes it consistent across the board, and like you said, since the, I mean, one of the overarching points of both the DAC and the SAC is always to encourage parent engagement. This provides more opportunity for parent engagement, because every year, there's a chance for parents, you know, and other representatives to apply and get onto either the DAC or the SAC.
But four years, that's so nice.
And the other thing was, if you have a one-year term, that all you have to do is one year, we might get a lot more people to be interested in doing it, rather than, oh, yeah, two years.
Let me hope we hook them for about two years.
Yeah, so if they're, and we wanted to extend it for four years because you gain experience in dealing with this and parents leading meetings, and I thought it was important that...
And that's, you know what, I'm actually fairly skeptical about terminals a lot, but there is a good point there with the terminals, because if you had a parent of an enrolled child who starts like sixth grade at the middle school, right? In four years, they wouldn't be a parent of the enrolled child anymore because their child would move on, but the teachers, in theory, might not move on. So this treats all the groups equally in that sense, because the parent would have to step off of the SAC even if they had started at that level. And so that way, you're going to get that kind of same consistent turnover amongst the groups and not have it be like, there's one sort of person who's been on there for 15 years, but no parent can ever be on there for that length of time because their kid will always end up moving out of the school. So that does level the field a little bit in a way I hadn't thought of.
Can I ask one clarifying question, just because I'm wondering, process? When someone's appointed and they're wanting to come back the second year, would they automatically be appointed by the board for that next year? Or is there a possibility the board would say, no, we're not going to keep you on now for your second year?
I think, yeah, they'd have to reapply because it's a one-year term.
And then who is the principal recommending? Is the principal going to continue to recommend that person? If they don't, I would want to know.
We discussed that, because what if there is a conflict with the principal, they didn't even know? And then it's like, I think one of them said, say, two-year terms, but what if there was a conflict with the principal and he was just like, this person was not good for our school accountability, they wanted her to come on and help out? And I think, you know, they told the board, we reserve the right to say no, and, you know, he wouldn't have to have that conflict, I guess. Extreme conflict, what was the word that you were using?
Hostility.
Yeah, so.
Any other discussion? So we don't need to take a vote on this?
Kelly just changed it.
All right, let's take, so we're done with this. So let's take a short break, and we will start in with Tina and Karen.
Is it fair to say like before, last time, our short break was like 10 minutes?
How short would you like it?
Is four minutes good?
Four minutes.
Because it's like 8:30.
I'll start the timer. On your mark.
Are we done with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Now we're going to develop the research, or will we have?
I suggest to you. Yes.
Which way are you going?
I think that's right.
It's how it exists.
What? Come on, you got me. That's a nice car. I saw a Toyota.
That's pretty cool.
So when you say one truck?
That's not old.
What does that mean?
Michaela, your wife?
Yeah, and my little Strangler. Oh, God.
So my daily.
Kylie. Yeah.
My daily. That's the only title in life. Absolutely. Oh, really? How many Toyotas?
So we did die.
I have a hard time saying.
I'm sure.
The wrong guy comes to run that.
Yeah, no, I don't have to. Tell him that the brainwave or...
We're insane.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I had to take, because it's the most...
Get the broken chair.
In college.
Actually, she didn't stay in it.
Oh, my, saved you twice.
Yeah, it's great.
No, it's not anything.
Nope.
Because you've got to build for...
Did everybody say? Yes, yes. I had, I'm a, I'm a...
There's a couple of...
Yeah, because I'm for engineering.
No, they're, they're more dressed.
You're like a clone.
You can go to the bathroom. Go rest, go back, but I shouldn't be here.
Should I get to the bathroom?
Well, there was a line.
Okay, meetings back to order, let's go.
Okay, so can I ask a question?
Please do, ma'am.
So, I've been asked permission. Are people good, like, do you wanna go up here and stand here? Like, you've been sitting for a long time, I don't know if you're a- You should roll, do you wanna roll your chair up here, or you just wanna sit? Okay, you don't have to. We do want you to be able to see the words, though.
Can you see the words?
Can you from there?
I think so.
If it's a problem, I'll-
You'll stay. Okay.
I'll leap over the table.
I'd like to see.
We'd like to watch that.
Yeah. Everybody, Chris, David's gonna leap over the table. You're gonna miss this.
Leave me.
He's not scared. Come on, if you wanna come in, if not, you can stay seated, or you could bring your chair in, but it's important to see the words, and I know we're-
Are we writing this time?
Nope, you're thinking. We lost Chris, though. Everybody do, let's do a little girl, maybe don't list, what's called, what's our elementary? Cross body, like, freina. You have floss. What's flossy?
Dance.
Lindsay's gonna teach you a dance, oh, yeah.
I heard, I heard that Mr. Perry is-
You're so cool.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Lindsay's gonna teach everyone how to do that, so you go over and crush your children tonight.
You're fine, do a dance.
No, no.
I'll get more viewers.
No, it's not.
Okay, I don't wanna start without him. If you wanna bring your chair up, you can, roll your chair, or you can stand, it's your turn. All right, Chris, welcome. We're inviting you to stand, or roll your chair, or whatever you prefer. We were sitting, we were sitting for a long time, we're inviting you to join us. You may start going noodle, so feel free to do some cross body, and then you'll teach us floss if you'd like.
Yeah, you gotta do it.
Dancing, so. Okay. So, last, last week, and for Chris, just earlier this week, right?
Yep.
We did some questioning to drive this, are you happy?
No. Just wandering off.
We did some questioning, looking at just some of the ideas, and we bucketed them, and we asked for permission, if you remember, we had, so we're thinking the path walk, and we're gonna be facilitators again, so we're gonna guide some discussion. Last time, we didn't get an opportunity to dive deeply, so we're gonna try to dive a little bit deeper into some of those questions of what people are thinking. So, we've taken all the sticky notes that were up here last time, and we've tried to bucket them, you gave us permission to bucket them into some common kind of themes. So, we're gonna start over here with core beliefs. And core beliefs, I know we had a discussion, who were we talking about? That it's really kind of the assumptions that we have. So, we believe certain things, but underlying that mission statement, or that purpose statement, are some core beliefs that are assumptions for the purpose statement. So, these were the one, two, three, four, five, six kind of buckets that arose in the core belief. So, we'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about core beliefs, because they're assumptions that you have when you get to your purpose statement. So, Karen is gonna need some dialogues, we're gonna read in these buckets, and what we're gonna try to do is get a word or a phrase that captures what's inside this bucket, and if we feel like it doesn't go, we're gonna move it out, or we might move it to a different place. Okay, so, this was our interpretation of things we felt went together. So, if we've missed it, then just say, "That's not what I meant when I wrote that, that was something different." So, you wanna pick one to start with?
Yes, and let me just take off the table, we're not gonna get a statement in 25 minutes. Like, it's just not gonna happen. And so, if we just focus on the core beliefs tonight, that'll give us a springboard to move forward for next time. Let me, another process piece, there were a couple of things we didn't know how to place, so they're just right here, they're kind of, we'll figure that out as we go and talk. And the parking lot is over there, there are a couple things there. We have not removed any sticky note, we have moved them around, but they're all here. And we've also added Chris's. So, he even had the same, like, she timed him, she said, "You have three minutes", and she timed him and he had to- Let him do the whole thing, yes. The same process, I couldn't see your thoughts before, like, I hit the boards and stuff like that. So, to the best of our ability, we took him through the process. So, his ideas are up here as well. Okay, so, core beliefs is it, let's just start with one of them, and we're gonna try to name what the core belief is. So, you talk about, so here written here, community involvement, community involvement, partnerships, local involvement with community, and parents-led committee, and parent-directed. What is the essence of your belief there? You believe in?
Only one word?
Community.
Community partnerships?
Sure, yeah.
Me, the parent one is the one that stands out to me.
There's three of parents. Parent-led, way, parent-directed, local involvement.
And what with parents?
Parents first.
Partnership with parents.
Flesh out those two ideas, like, share more about yours than practical. Parents come first, but then partnership with parents, which, talk through.
I don't know if parent directed isn't catching with that, and I think what Chris is saying, partnership with parents, is that that's the schools recognizing the parents' privacy and their children's education, and that's how we partner with them by recognizing and respecting that role. And as we all know, there's really things opposite of that.
Okay, partnering, privacy, seem a little contradicting still, has to be more sharing.
Well, I'm looking at the board, you know, community, you know, the school is a partner of the community and the parents, and so, I was thinking about both of those things, and I have it all in there, but, you know, we have partnership with parents, and if you're focusing on parents, we have to be working with parents if they have partnerships, you know? No, because we're not having partnership with parents, and we're not working with them.
And there are lots of partnerships. Sue and Chris.
Well, if the parent, what if the parent partnership kind of says, hey, it's two equal partners? Partners is two equals?
Right.
And so, the question is, is that really what we're saying, that they're both equal, or are we saying that one is for the person? I think parents have to be personal equals, and that's, that's just the nature of the game, because they ultimately are the customers. They're the ones who choose where their kids go to school, so we have to always put parents first. That's obviously parents.
Every time, any school, the parent is the customer. Because if you don't provide a product that they believe in, they're going to take their business somewhere else. So, that's kind of focused, what my focus is there, is that, and you can say parent-oriented?
There's lots of type of parent here, community is also a word that goes in that circle. Does that fit in that circle, whether we need to split it out, is it different somehow?
Seems to be different.
How, speak, speak about the community.
Well, the community kind of sets, we have different virtues in different communities, different, you know, state governments are different for each state, we focus the things that are important for them. What's unique about our Woodland Park community? How do we describe our community here?
Tyler County, we're Woodland Park.
Tyler County, Woodland Park, our area.
Okay.
We're, hang on a sec. We're, it's, it's like Chris said, early layout there, our community is a very, has a majority, a very conservative community. We have a lot of churches here in Woodland Park, and we have across the county, and so, we have very conservative, the majority of, are very conservative socially, and-
So, can I say values, community values?
Community values.
Is that okay? Is that what they were?
And that'd be a good way to put it.
And the other thing I think of with community is that we want our kids to become, you know, great contributors to the community, that we want to be instilling community values as part of their education, so they're gonna become valuable members.
Citizens, right? Do we have the names up there for now, rates for our list, or is there anything we need to change or add? Let's turn to this one. Free to students, it creates access to resources for all students, public ed is an equalizer for all, for everyone, it provides an opportunity for all students to excel. Let's try to put that on there. What's the essence, the heart of that?
All and everyone.
All and everyone, it's repeated multiple times.
It's for all, and it's free. Well, it's not, nothing is free.
Maybe free. Does free belong there? Great question, does free belong there?
Well, it costs a lot of money to run a school.
Sure does. Well, it does have a core belief, so remember, we're creating core beliefs and assumptions. So, you're saying a core belief is that our schools are for all, they're for everyone?
Yes. Yeah, they do provide an opportunity for everyone. Provide an opportunity for, yes.
Everyone in Tyler County?
All students.
All, all students?
All. Up to 21.
Or maybe students open without the district, like, if someone wants-
Yeah, if someone wants to drive up from the Springs to come up here, why not? Because I hear my friends, if you wanna get down to the, you know, if they wanna come up here, awesome. All students for that.
Okay.
All students.
We do have online students as well, that are out?
And hopefully, we're going to bring people from down the-
Can I ask a little about this equalizer rule? It's an intriguing word.
I wonder about that as well.
Seeing education as an equalizer? Okay, talk about that.
It's a distinction. It's, that's, that's the difference between the sort of modern approach of equity, which is, we're all equalizing to the same results versus, you know, equal opportunity, which is that we're giving everybody an equal chance to be their best and find their way. I don't think that it's an equalizer, it gives everybody a chance, and some excel in different areas than others. So, equalizer is just not a word that comes to mind for me with public education, or what my core belief about public education is.
And our core belief about the country is that we have, we start out with an equal opportunity to succeed or fail. So, we provide an opportunity for the students to succeed.
So, equal opportunity.
An equal opportunity. So, if you see that word, that word is actually in quotes, so the air quotes around equalizer, and I wrote that, has to do primarily with opportunities, and the fact that I have traveled extensively around the world, and the question had to do with education in America. Yeah, okay, so it was more specifically related to the culture of education within our nation. And so, public education is, is, you could say, it could be substituted, that word could be substituted for equal opportunity, that's fine, but for me, comparing that to other nations that I've been to, where only the elite were educated, that's, that's an equalizing dynamic where, yeah, that's where, it's where everyone creates access, and then I-
Yeah, I think what you're saying, Chris, is that it promotes equality in our, amongst our citizens.
So, this was a bit of an echo, it provides an opportunity for all students to excel, it creates access and resources for all students. It's a, for me, this phrase right here is something that I personally can connect with, because I've been in cultures where there was a marginalized population, that they were not on equal footing with other students, and so, American education provides that. Well, that explains it, yes.
Yeah, it's promoting equality.
So, equal opportunity kind of captures that? Do we feel like we've captured that?
Maybe, it's almost like you're saying it's essential to, for us to be equal, that we have, we all have that same opportunity, we have an opportunity.
So, it's, yeah, it's not equity in the definition, that a lot of us have learned that in recent years, it's more of that base level, it equalizes opportunities, they equalize whether they are affluent, even caste system, you know, high-level families, or if they are just, you know, marginalized, coming out of reservations, or out of other impoverished subcultures or foundation, they have equal opportunity to be educated. Or growing up a poor area.
It sounds like we landed pretty hard then on equal opportunity. Is that a decision point?
Yes, to me, it is, yes.
For all students?
For all students.
I don't know if that matters, it's not, just, you can use equal opportunity for right now. Okay? Let's talk, yeah, let's take the individualism piece, okay, so this one here. Opportunity, college, business, military, STEAM, education, those are opportunities for scholarships, advanced education, hard skills like engineering, welding, artists, many learning opportunities, to know all students are created equal and endowed by their creator, skilled and wide spectrum from trades to integrated computer systems, opportunity, and unique individuals. That bucket.
I think that's stressing individualism, that the opportunity is to, is for each individual to find-
What was the question about? What makes American education an equal opportunity? And I tie up individualism for that reason, because, yeah.
Right, and it's why I have college, business, military, but it's not just for practice. It's respecting, it's respecting the diversity of diverse individuals in schools, that it's about helping them find their way, that they wanna be diverse.
Because there's many programs there, like, that's not just catering to one group of students.
Right, but it's diverse opportunities.
Diverse opportunities?
Yeah, I think the theme there is about-
It's important to tag diverse, because they can be a good or a bad.
Yeah, I think the theme there is definitely about the opportunity for different individuals, it's about tailoring to the individual needs.
With great work ethic?
No kidding?
Look at you! That's wonderful.
Diverse opportunities.
Is there anything else in this?
Because we do a lot of different things here at this school.
For each individual.
And they pick their path, whether they're gonna succeed or not.
Or, or their parents.
With their parents.
Influenced by their parents.
Well, the parents, the customer, and their kids.
Any more conversation about this one? Okay, so then here, choice of schools, that's me. Market.
Oh, marketplace.
Oh, marketplace, choice, and then it gives the freedom to, the freedom to parents on how kids are educated. And this one, maybe is up here, I'm not sure. Flesh it out, the choice piece. What's the core belief about choice?
Approach.
What does that mean? That's, that's voting.
Clarify that one. Never anyone to shy from that. That's, that's consistent with the theme of diversity for each individual, about parent orientation, and it's about that we, we are in favor of the-
Parent choice, that brings in every other circle, brings in the parents, brings in the community values, brings diversity in, choice.
Equal opportunity for everyone?
Brings in all those circles. So, does it have to be called out? Is choice captured here? In this statement, equal and diverse opportunity for individuals, does that capture choice?
I think we need to, like, choice is a big, it's a big-
It might tie in with the word.
It's, yeah, it's in there.
It's really more about parents, all the social.
First approach, what's that?
Parent choice.
So, I'm gonna give you some examples of parent choice. I've had some parents that their choice- I've had some parents that their choice is that their kid can have Domino's delivered to lunch or have lunchtime. And the parent choice that their kid, help me out, Dell, what else are parents?
I know parents who run schools.
Yeah, they get paid for everything that he does. Right. But some parents that told me the choice was that their student wouldn't listen to me as the administrator, and they told their student that they, I had no power, you don't have to listen to this administrator when she directs you. That was the parent choice, to tell their student that they did not have to follow my discipline and behavior redirections at school.
Well, that's good. If the parent makes that choice, then they need to choose, that doesn't fit within the paradigm of our school. But if they want that choice, and they're making that choice for their child, then they need to choose a different school where they fit into that. Because as a parent's customer, we don't provide that kind of product for their children, which is okay. You know, if you wanna have Domino's delivered to your kid at school, that's okay.
Not at our school.
But, but we don't provide that kind of product.
That's a fine, and that's what botched personal district.
Because that's where the bumpers, we provide the bumpers.
He said, I don't personalize education.
Yeah, we don't personalize education.
This is what I'm offering to you, taking the lead.
That's basically it, yes. We have a fabulous product here with a great product line. That's enough, that might be good for your kids, but it doesn't fit into our, what we're.
So it's very.
It doesn't fit into purpose.
That doesn't match with this. It's a contrary idea.
So how?
So let's keep flushing that out.
Well, we get all things to all people.
So, that's not accurate.
Well, I guess we need to narrow that down a bit. Because if we're not gonna allow Domino's to be delivered to the school, and they're not gonna recognize an administrator's authority, well, that doesn't quite fit in with our.
Cause I will tell you that when we have some of these words.
Carol's saying Domino's delivery before, but though.
No, but I'm, I'm telling you when, when you use some of these words, cause we've used it before, people take advantage of, that means I can do whatever I want, cause I'm the customer, and you have to do whatever I want to keep me as a customer. So see, a business example.
Does that fall under?
So this is example, Nordstrom is famous for the customer's always right. Other Macy's or other department stores are not. Walmart, you don't get to have it your way, right? So, those are, that's perfecting. But there's different, I did you right, I cross, I cross my mess. But that's, it's, we have to decide what's right. You guys have to decide what's right for you guys.
But the customer's always right, I think is a core belief. It doesn't mean that unlimited in practice, and that'll go to, you know, tactics or strategies or things like that, but it, it is a core anchoring belief that you work with within reason on, but nobody pretends that it's an invitation to anarchy in Nordstrom. It's just a, the point is that we are trying, that's, our customer comes first, and we're always trying to find a way to work with them without trying to convince them that they're wrong.
Wouldn't that fall over into the tactic or the strategy way of schools?
There's a core, the core belief though, that is their core belief, and they make all of their policies based on that.
But if Hometown Garage provides these services, and you come there and you wanna order a pizza, and the customer says, I demand you make me a pizza. Well, we don't provide pizzas here, we fix your car. That's what, I mean, how do you reconcile? But yet, they're customer oriented, and they wanna provide equal and diverse opportunity for any kind of car you wanna bring in there, but you know what, we don't make pizzas.
So, so one of the, one of the challenges I'm having with this, just to be honest, is we're tying this to our core beliefs, but the question, at least that I remember, had to do with the culture in America surrounding education. It doesn't, so we can point to culture and say, this is a norm, a cultural norm, that has emerged over the last twenty years. Is it my personal core belief? I'm not convinced, at least in the, in the, yeah, that context that you're bringing, that that's actually a core belief. I actually find that frustrating in some regards, related to our nation. But that's another conversation. I just, the part that's frustrating is, like, the customers are always right, and, you know, meanwhile, there are people who, just like schools, who have, that we're doing here, have specific stated values and, and goal orientations. So, I'm not convinced that, that we need to be filtering all of our purpose statements through the lens of choice entirely. It is a norm, and it is part of what makes education in America what it is today.
It's great. Um, we go back when we were in school, we'd have to go to school based on your, just your zip code. And, you know, we had a lot of friends that would lie out their code and go to their grandparents and, and try to go because they were the better, you know, choice. We still see that in some of the states, but that is something that has changed a few seven, twelve years, where you do have the choice to go into school. Do I think it needs to be in there? I don't know. I don't know where the.
So maybe.
I would fold it to see if we can find. What was that? But I do wanna go back to real quick on your thing, on the customer's always right. I don't think we're putting that in there as like, you're the customer, the parent, you're always right, because no, why would you submit? This is, you're sending them to a district or school that has administrations and teachers or, or education experts, that, you know, that has to be a, a bumper.
Yeah, what I think we'll debate on the.
Choice with batteries?
Yeah, when I, when I think of customer, parent is the customer, here's the product that we're providing. Now, I have to provide a product that you're, I have to convince you or prove to you that the product we're providing is something that you, will, is of value to you and to your kids.
Do you think that would be whole, or do you think choice, or what do you think?
I think school choice is down, is down.
When you say that.
How are we gonna present it? I mean, these are our core values. Well, aren't our core values after our mission or our?
This is shaping, this is shaping your mission, vision piece. Because the core values underline everything that we decide upon, everything we decide upon.
Right, but school choice would go, would align with our, what our vision is, and it would fall under those guidelines.
Do you see it as a tactic? So maybe the question is, maybe we can need to move this over to purpose, and revisit it when we come to purpose?
Yeah, I do feel like school choice is not a core belief. It grows from the core belief about parent orientation and equal and diverse opportunity for, for our kids.
With parents. I think it belongs here.
Yeah, I, I agree with Tina, that put it in some places.
And I think it, like you said, it's, it's almost speaking to everything we're doing.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it can't be contained in one bubble.
Yeah.
In one bucket, yes.
Okay?
I agree with that, too.
Okay. There's two more. All right, teacher-driven classrooms, healthy relationships with students, educators, creating an atmosphere where students can thrive academically, great environment, teachers staff students, kids love their teachers, dedicated teachers, teacher-led classrooms, good leaders, mentor relationships, motivate students and teachers that love the kids. Yeah, it's kinda funny, I loved, I just looked over at them all. A core belief when we wrote our strategic plan, eighteen million years ago, you see in the bottom left corner, educators that inspire, empower, and connect. That was a core belief of the group when we wrote it. It's kinda funny, cause as you were reading this, I was like, that's, I've heard that before. I don't know if that's where this group was going with this, but it's just.
Well, it's certainly off the same side of the field, isn't it?
It's a core belief that the people who are in the classroom, our students, are the people who make the difference, they're, they're the difference makers. And I, I think the value, the core belief is that they matter.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing about the difference makers of the word that came to my mind too, as you're talking about. Cause I, I think what we wanna promote is the, is just, there's, there's no substitute for that personal relationship between a teacher and a student, that's the best way to learn.
That's it.
On purpose, yes. What else? Do those capture that bucket?
Yeah, I think so, cause that's about teachers that love kids and.
And it says kids.
Kids that love their teacher.
I mean, you think about, you're probably not gonna think about as much as your principal, but that, that teacher and student relationship.
And that, that matters so much to the parent. I mean, every parent, you usually judge the school on, do I like the teacher who's teaching a nice kid?
Do you know what?
To them, that's, that's the key ingredient.
That's a key distinction there, that do you like them, or the love piece? Like, the difference between like and love, like loving someone, we have their best interest at heart, sometimes they're not gonna like what you're doing, as we know as parents, right?
Yeah. You know, I like all those things there, but if I had to narrow it down to about teachers and relationship, and that might be stepping outside of what it is. I want a teacher who is excellent in their field, they're expert in their field of study or teaching. That develops, that has a positive relationship with my student, with my child.
Okay.
So, they have to be excellent in their field, knowledgeable and excellent in their field, and to be able to develop great relationships with kids.
So it's not, it's not.
They don't have to look, they don't have to like my kid, but.
It's not about the feelings, okay, all right.
They have to have a good relationship with them.
More, okay?
They don't have to like them, just have a good relationship with them.
Right, I think.
Educational expert.
Yeah, expert in their field.
The last one. Capacity to change and open to change.
Gee, that's.
It does a little.
Those are my handwriting, I guess, I got them all together.
I mean, that, yeah, it feels subdued by choice or by, you know, diverse opportunity.
Yeah. When I wrote those, I was thinking, I forget what the question was, is both times, those are both mine.
This is five years and this is now.
So, if what, if we find something that works better than what we're doing as a company, are we willing to make the changes necessary to satisfy our customers with a great product?
Can I go for this word?
Okay, you heard.
Continuous improvement.
Continuous improvement, yes. But not only continuing improvement, but to, to value continually improve.
Improve.
Because we all get in a comfortable rut. You know, this is the way we've always done it.
So do rats.
Yeah, it's easy to get there. Well, you know, the living room's always been arranged that way.
Well, and this is about, I think, they, they're getting back to valuing the input from our parents and from our teachers, because they, so that they can have that great relationship and they can, and they can get their expertise into the classroom and develop professionally. It's, it's about being able to hear those other voices and to listen to what they're saying. And that's how you can make continuous improvement.
Okay. Is that, that hear, hear voices of community and parents? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you have to be, you have to be open-minded.
Okay.
You know, to your community and, and, you know, I think parents have kinda always kinda have a personal equals on that, but obviously, you know, we need, you know, we have to value our teachers, you know, in developing like the curriculum and, and how the classroom's gonna be, and I know different teachers do different things, so it's definitely not about shutting them out or anything like that, but that's, that's how you have that continuous improvement, right?
Right.
And in the Air Force, they used to say flexibility is the key to air power.
You've mentioned, well, just no rest, I just wanted to flesh out real quick, the growth mindset concept is that we're always getting better, better, better?
Yeah, growth is a good word.
And that you don't get in the rest. Continuous improvement's very similar. So when this comes together, cause I know we're, we're at our time, what this looks like is that your core beliefs might read something like, you have, you have a purpose statement which we have to push out, like, would the park exist to do amazing things for all the people in the, you know, all the bubbles over there? In doing so, we, we have core beliefs that value parent-oriented actions, the incorporation of community values, equal and diverse opportunities for each individual, continuous improvement processes, expert teachers that make positive relationships with kids. So those are core values, then the conservatives filters. So that's where I'm saying, like, you telling us this, like, I'm like, okay, I have a greater understanding now, cause these are the assumptions by which we build program. So you've given some assumptions that tell us the things that we should be focusing on. And our next step will be then to take these buckets and build the, would the park exist to do this? And in doing so, we value this, and this, and this, and this, and this. And then that's what comes together as the, the purpose and core values of the board that serves as the filters for anything that we wanna put through. So we wanna do this, let's put it through these filters. Does it match our values? You know, we wanna sell pizzas? Well, I don't know, does it match the values here? And so that gives a place to put those, that through. So, does this feel like the right kind of core values? I just threw words to it, obviously we threw better words, I was just feeling there's some nice words on the board. So our next step would be, and, and I can offer, I might go back on the agenda next week, cause I can offer something, might save a little time next week, would be to take then the purpose stuff and start looking at, so this is about, you notice this was about assumptions, this is mostly gonna be about kids, right? Cause would the park exist, cause there's kids that come to the building and we use, you know, and we teach them and stuff. So this is gonna be the stuff about our kids, and what happens when kids go through our system? What is the product that we produce? This is this bubble, cause it's the purpose of the Woodland Park School District, given these assumptions about how Woodland Park School District works. So the next thing would be to take these and flesh out, what do these mean to you? So that we can put those words to the purpose statements. So at the.
You know, I wish that we, I would really like to have, now that we've gone through GP seven at all, we need a meeting where we can focus on this. This, 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 that's why I said earlier tonight, and I didn't mean to not do what we were doing, cause that had to be numbers, to open the doors, to develop this and now apply it. But this is so important, we need a meeting that's dedicated to this. So.
Cause we keep kinda doing it, and then we have to reorient.
Bedtime is what we said.
We have to reorient, well, we said.
Ryan, I'm already five minutes over.
Well, the one thing I could offer is that, so next week, we have, we do have, so we have the STEM presentation, we have some public comments, we have the academic presentation, and I know what our principal said is, can you just present our data to the board? Originally, we were gonna rotate through each building, and they felt like that felt disjointed, they're like, can you just present our data? So we'll be presenting the data from the schools as well as Merit's data, so Merit will be joining us to do that also. So initially, that was like an hour long, so that becomes shorter when it's just me presenting the data.
Maybe it's shorter if you don't.
I know. Sounds like dang. And then we have the selection of the stack and deck, and so I don't know the process by which to do that, that's the kind of, we don't know. So probably, I don't know that it fits in next week.
I want to dedicate, this is important.
It is.
We need to dedicate a meeting to this.
Okay, so when is that? Once this happens, your decisions will come faster.
Yes.
Because it's the filter.
Gives you know.
Cause that's what we use, when we look at something new, we put it to our filter.
Well, when can we have another meeting? When do you wanna have another, a work session that's just this? Can anybody come during the day? Tina and Dell are already at work. So is Karen.
We do have a work session already scheduled for October twenty-sixth.
That's too far out. So I think.
Well, remember that there is a week. Dell and I are neither here, so. Del and I are neither here, so when we have those red days, we're, we're actually leaving this, I'm leaving the state.
Good for you.
We're leaving, we're leaving.
So, we can do it twenty-sixth, unless there's something.
Chris, you can do it anytime you want, so.
I mean, maybe the, maybe the twenty-sixth is the, that might be the earliest. We can do it considering there's a meeting next week, you guys are all.
Are we going to talk about the policies that you guys finish or even go over any of those? Or are we going to push that back again?
As long as it took tonight, those are going to take days. Well, we do need to get done, but how far Del, we're going to kick. Huh?
I don't want to take it that hard.
No, I'm just asking what's on the work session. I guess what my question is. We don't have anything on the work session for the twenty-sixth. So.
Okay, that's what.
All right, so then this needs to be on the.
Well, and you saw, we got to some words pretty quickly. We had about thirty minutes, because then you stopped and did some other stuff. So, you're probably talking, if you spent an hour, if you spent at least forty-five minutes here, and then some time putting it into a statement, I think you would have, we've met for three hours, so you would have some time, and maybe the point is to put this on the front side of it.
Yes, I was going to say, whatever you want to put on the front side. So, I guess that's where I was leaning for one today. If you put it on the, what was on it? We put this on the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty, yeah, six. And then anything else after you put on. Whatever else on there. All right, the rest of the stuff, that's what was supposed to be on here.
I mean, you can put those other policies on, on the work session. You know, make this the first part of it, and then we can get to them and start working on. We'll just have to see how it goes. So, they can certainly be on the agenda.
Is there anything else?
See how time goes.
There is a point typically when, once we have a mission, a vision, and purpose, there are usually board goals. And talk about, here are the goals of the board for the year, kind of like we write goals, like, here's what's going to happen this year. So, wanting to know what are the goals of the board this year? Because that's kind of what drives us, is knowing what are the goals of the board. So, now you know your purpose and your vision statement, what are the, now what are the goals? Because it is a filter by which to put those goals through. So, I don't know where that would fall to have some goal setting. So, that's, you know.
I think that flows well right after this. Personally, I think that helps empower the administration to get working towards particular goals. Whereas our policy and our amendments, the policies are important, they're, they're not directly tied to specifically your, your assignments. And I think the goals are. And here we are, not in this school. Typically, those goals, that goal setting happens at August retreat that didn't happen this year. So, it would be nice, I think, for these folks and their staff to have a set goals to start working towards. Because it happens, they, they start working on it. So, I think getting the purpose statement and then starting with goals.
Yep.
So, that would be on the twenty-sixth. So, if you want to take a picture of these so that you can like study, give me a homework. No, I'm just joking. You could, you could take a picture. But a lot of it realizes in the dialogue. So, I would not advise, you know, that I'm going to write the words and bring them. Because a lot of times what you saw is we all built on each other, and then we're like, ooh, I like that word. Ooh, I like, I mean, this became what? Started here, we added this, then we added this. And that's what makes collaboration so awesome, is that people build on each other.
I know, I, even if I take photos from last time, I came in here, it just moments ago, I'm very.
Because we restart, right, yeah.
And it's good.
Yeah, it is a pressure, sure.
So, I agree with that as well.
Okay, so then you have to have a, you have to adjourn your meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Austin.
Aye.
Illingworth.
Aye.
Kimball.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Just keep going.
Aye.
She just told me how to vote.
No, I said you have to, you have to. She said, yes, or no.
She just, she told me how.
Aye, aye, aye.